Hello, hello. How is everybody this evening? Uh, that didn't sound too good. I'mma try this again. How is everybody this evening? All right, thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming out. I want to, again, welcome you to our town hall for District Four. I know sometimes it is a challenge to get here because it's right after work, but I appreciate you. I have our staff here and some presenters that have some really great information for you. So I want to make sure that you know what's happening in District Four. So this is our first one for 2025. I'm happy to see everybody and I hope that everybody is having a wonderful 2025 so far. So with that said, I want to bring up some pretty fabulous people in the city of Inglewood. I would say they're pretty fabulous. So we're going to start with our mayor, James T. Butts. And I wonder, does anybody know who he is? Anybody know? So just a quick little introduction to him. I always want to acknowledge how hard he works. I don't know if you guys know this, this man don't sleep. Did y'all know that? He is constantly working around the clock for you guys and planning and organizing and doing everything that it takes to be a good mayor. And you see and you're reaping the results, right? So with that said, we are a wonderful team between the mayor and the council members, and we are doing great things right here in the city of Inglewood. And so I hope that you are enjoying and reaping the benefits of all the hard work. If you are and you're enjoying what's happening, can I get a hand clap? Can I? All right, good. We're going in the right direction. Sounds like we're going in the right direction. So with that said, please, please welcome our fabulous Inglewood mayor, James T. Butts, to the mic.
Hey, you guys, is the food good? Dion always feeds you, right? You know, I gotta tell you that, um, when was the last town hall meeting you had, Dion?
Uh, last year, 2024.
I know, but it was like late or early. Okay, okay, so since August, since August, here's what's happened. Every one of you that bothered to apply for it got a $500 property tax dividend from the city of Inglewood. Now, I gotta tell you this, no city in the history of this country has ever given a property tax rebate. And a little fun fact, the city of Inglewood hosts about four and a half million to five million people a year at 400 events in the city, okay? We are the sports entertainment capital of the western United States at the very least. The impact that this has had on our ability to produce services is demonstrable. It used to be if you were coming from LA to Inglewood, the roads got worse. What happens when you go from Inglewood to LA now? The roads get worse. We've had a really strong infrastructure program for the last 10 years. And our reserves, that's the money that the city has in the bank. We have more money in reserves than Beverly Hills, City of Los Angeles, Torrance, and Santa Monica. Come on now, come on now. Inglewood is the tip of the spear in cities, and since August, we now know that we're going to host eight FIFA World Cup matches in 2026, the NBA All-Star Weekend in 2026, Super Bowl 61 in 2027, and of course, the World Olympic Games in 2028, the opening and closing ceremonies, basketball and swimming. We are going to be an international city come 2028. And I don't know if you have the schedule to speak, but Vic from LA 2028 is here. Vic, would you stand up so that we can acknowledge you? He's in the back. We've been collaborating with them for the last three years to make sure that we're ready for the Olympics. I went to a meeting with, I think, 30 mayors in the county at the Getty House, which is the mayor's residence in Los Angeles. And the city of Los Angeles was, their coordinator was saying they were wondering if they're going to break even because they have to do so much infrastructure work to get ready. And I said, "We always make money on our events, and we are ready if they were having Olympics tomorrow, we're ready." Because we host hundreds of thousands of people in a month here in the city of Inglewood. So I want to give a big hand to Dion Falk. She just re-elected. Thank you for your support of her. Our city clerk, Ayesha Thompson, just re-elected. And we have a brand-new city treasurer after 34 years with the prior treasurer, Angela Allen. So let's give a big hand to Angela. I want to thank you guys for your support, and I'm gonna turn it back over to our fabulous councilwoman, District Four, Dion Falk.
Thank you, thank you. All right, now, next up, I am going to go to our District Two in the city of Inglewood and introduce Councilman Alex Padilla. And he is the, I call him the little Energizer Bunny because he is always doing something. He is working hard in his district, having lots of events. And so I love to look up to him, compliment him, all that he does. And he is a councilman to be emulated. So I really appreciate all that you do in District Two. And let's welcome Alex Padilla, councilmember.
Got it? All right, here we go. All right, well, you know, first off, I just want to say it truly is a pleasure to be here tonight with you to talk about and hear about all the fabulous things that are happening, not only in the city of Inglewood, but more specifically in your district, in District Number Four. All the amazing things that your council representative, Dion Falk, is the one that pushes for these things to happen. They don't just like happen, right? You know, I wish it was that easy. As councilmembers, with the mayor and with our staff, we huddle up and we talk about priorities. What are the things that we need to make happen? And I know she's going to touch on the Crenshaw Project, and she's going to touch on a few other things, but we couldn't do what we do, quite frankly, if it wasn't for you. If it wasn't for each one of you and the support that you give us when you come out and you vote for us, when you support us, when you call us and let us know, hey, this is an issue of concern, and we can address it, working together. And that's the one key point about the city of Inglewood, is we truly are back to being a city of champions. The South Bay, the gem of the South Bay. Did you guys know that's truly our title, the gem of the South Bay, right? And so we are fortunate to have everything that we have, but again, it's because of you. So I want you to give yourselves a round of applause, and I want to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, to share all the excitement with each and every one of you. May God bless you and continue to stay engaged and involved with our community. Have a blessed night. Thank you, Dion.
All right, so now, did, hopefully by now, because I know that she's newer, but you guys know we have another fabulous councilwoman. Do we know that? Do we know that? Okay, so I'm excited to bring up our councilwoman, Gloria Gray, District One, who is doing her thing and making her mark in the city of Inglewood. So let's give it up for Councilwoman Gloria Gray.
Good evening, everyone. You know, thank you for that introduction, my fellow councilwoman. You know, tonight is all about you, but it's all about celebrating your leader because Dion Falk is your leader. And I think Councilman Padilla mentioned about how we get together and make decisions about projects and things that happen. But you do need to have an advocate and a leader in that room when we do that. And let's give it up for Councilwoman Dion Falk. Stand up, Dion. Stand up. And you know, the majority of the council are men, so it's not easy being in that room, right, Dion? Not easy at all. And Mayor Butts has talked about all the fabulous things that have happened here since he's been mayor. And you know, it's a speech that he gives all the time, but the good part about that is to remind you of how lucky we are who live here in this city, right, Mayor Butts?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, right? Is to remind you all the great things that have happened in the last, what, 10, 13 years? Right? And trust me, I've been in public service for a long time, and I know a lot of elected officials, and they are truly jealous of what's going on in Inglewood. They really are, because we are really progressive. We are truly on the move. We are truly so. Be proud. It's not like you read the news and all the bad things happening in Inglewood. Now you hear good things, all the positive things. I mean, I travel a lot, and I hear people talking about the SoFi Stadium and Dion's district and Hollywood Park and Intuit Dome and all the other things that are coming here, and it's just wonderful. Mayor Butts talked about, you know, a variety of events associated with the Olympics and everything else. And you know what? That is not happening in any other place except here. So give everybody who's part of that, you know? You have to give him kudos for that. So, but tonight is all about hearing from department heads, hearing about what's happening here in this city. And Dion has brought many of our leaders here, our staff, to talk about all those things, and I really encourage you to listen, to ask questions, so that you will truly be connected. Because this town hall, what she's bringing to you, is a way to stay engaged and connected. So please listen, learn, and know about all the good things that are happening here in this city. So I'm very happy to be here. Thank you, Dion, for inviting me, and enjoy and have fun, but learn, okay?
Yes.
I had to respond to that mail thing. So check this out, you guys. In the city of Inglewood, in the last seven years, we promoted seven woman managers in the city. But for the first time in the history of the city, we've promoted a woman assistant city manager, and that's Yikima Decatur. Yikima, could you stand up? Right here, Tura. Now, you guys, that's the second highest position in the city's hierarchy. When I came, Yikima was working in the clerk's office, and she was a staff assistant on the ninth floor in a little office with no windows. And I saw right away, she is very bright, and she has ascended over the last 14 years to this position. And Yikima, I just wanted to make sure you got acknowledged. Congratulations.
All right. I guess the mayor thought that I wasn't going to acknowledge her, but I was. But I know, I was, I'm gonna acknowledge. Okay, so we've had, if you guys watched the city council meetings, then we have, you'll see on Tuesday that we did promote two people. And so that was Yikima Decatur and Chris Jackson. And they are now assistant city managers. And also, we have Louis Atwell, who was promoted to city manager. All right? So we're doing big things. We have great people in City Hall. Everybody works really hard, but at the end of the day, we're a family. We support each other, and that's what I love about being in the city of Inglewood at City Hall. So I have a couple more people I want to introduce. So next up is my girl, our city clerk. We came in together, we were elected together 2020. And I will tell you a little bit about her. She handles, in the office of the city clerk, she handles a lot of the contracts that come through City Hall. And she is very professional, very mannerable. She handles the business of the city, and everything gets done on time and without any issues. And I love that about her. And she also, if you guys don't know, a lot of times when we have events and stuff, we call her the fashion diva, because that's her little thing that she's into. So she's a lot of fun, and so that's my girl. I'm really proud of her. I'm really proud of all the work she does in the city of Inglewood for you every day. Ayesha Thompson, city clerk.
Thank you so much, councilwoman. And again, to the mayor and our councilmembers here, thank you all, and to our residents. Hello, how is everyone doing? I'm Ayesha Thompson, I'm your city clerk. I didn't just hop in in 2020. I worked in the city clerk's office for 15 years before I became elected in 2020. Then I was re-elected last year in November. Thank y'all so much. Thank you so much. So I'm just humbly, I'm grateful, I'm thankful. Yes, everything comes in my office and goes out my office. I'm so proud, I'm so thankful of everything that I've been blessed to have. Councilwoman, I'm so thankful that you and I, we've come together, we've stood firm and stood tall together. We've had some head bumps and some knocks-ins, but we get through those, and I love that, and I'm appreciative of that. And again, I know you're going to mention Women's Rock, and so looking forward to that. So yes, thank you all so much. I'm here if you need me. My business cards will be at the table. Thank you, councilwoman.
Thank you. We also have our city treasurer, Angela Allen. And I really got a chance to get to know her a lot when I was seeking reelection last year, and she was seeking an election. And so I want to bring her up. She is going to be a fabulous treasurer for the city of Inglewood. I want to just let her bring quick greetings to you as well. So, city treasurer, Angela Allen.
Hello, District Four residents and mayor and councilmembers and city of Inglewood staff. I want to take this time first to thank you guys for your votes, thank you for your support. And if there's anything that I can do for you, please give my office a call. I'm here Monday through Friday. Thank you, have a good one.
All right, and then there's a few more people I want to acknowledge, but before I get to them, I want you all to know, and hopefully you do know, we do have commissioners in the city that work very hard in the city of Inglewood. And so every district, which there's four districts, every district has commissioners. And we have our commissioners, they meet monthly, and they handle the business of the city. So I would like to, at this time, ask our District Four commissioners to please stand. There we go. And before you sit down, really quick, I know you don't have a microphone, really quickly, just announce your name and which commission or board you're on, quickly. All right. Thank you, Jacqueline. We have another commissioner here. He's from a different district, but if he wants to go ahead and announce himself. Yes. Oh, yes, yes, go ahead. All right. Thank you so much for that. And then I also want to just thank some of our staff that are here. We have our social media team, if you can give them a hand. And we also, my deputy, Malcolm Patton, who works so hard. We have Sidia Laverde, please stand up. She is here for Spanish translation services. And so as you can see, we're all a big family to make things happen for you. So I want to probably go ahead and get started. I hope that I didn't overlook anyone before we go ahead and get, jump into the agenda. Yes. I'm sorry. Oh, yes, okay, yes, I did, I did, thank you. How did I forget them? I guess because he's on, he's doing a presentation. Okay, so you all know that we have the best doggone county administrator for Inglewood Unified School District right here in this audience, Dr. Morris. So please stand up. You guys were hiding, but you're, he's doing a presentation tonight. And then we have our president, Brandon Myers. Please give him a hand. He works very hard. And so I like to actually make sure you understand that they are working really hard. You all know that, and he's going to talk a little bit about it, but Inglewood Unified School District is doing very well, and you're going to hear that from him. You're going to be very happy with his update because he's doing a wonderful job, him and the school board members. So with that said, I am going to get started with our public safety, and I'm going to ask Officer Freeman to come up, Freeman Smith. He is our District Four Police Lieutenant. And while he's coming up, I'm going to ask Lieutenant Meeks, well, come on up, he's, come on up, because I know what you're thinking before he starts. Do you guys remember this guy? You guys were wondering what happened to him, huh? So Lieutenant Meeks has been promoted. So that's why he don't have on a uniform anymore. He is now a detective. That's why he's looking so sharp. So he promised me he would come back and just say hello to you guys really briefly because he knows he left in a hurry. It was because he got a promotional opportunity. And so before we turn it over to our lieutenant, I just wanted to give our Detective Meeks just a minute to say hello and bring greetings, because I know you guys have been asking about him. So go ahead.
Councilwoman is too much. She is too much. District Four family, how y'all doing tonight? I promised the councilwoman I would come here tonight to say I apologize. I apologize because when I got moved up to the detective bureau last year, I never said I will see you later. So forgive me, I'm seeing you now. But like the councilwoman said, I'm still with the police department, but I'm up in the detective bureau. So I'm lieutenant in the detective bureau. I manage pretty much every investigative desk that we have, from homicide and robbery and assaults to economic crimes. And so I just want you to know that our detectives are out there working hard to continue to ensure that your quality of life continues to prosper in the city that Mayor Butts has built. So I'm still here, and I'm still available to you because you are my District Four family, and I ain't forgot y'all, okay? So thank you for having me up here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Freeman Smith. I'm a police lieutenant with the Inglewood Police Department. I want to thank you guys for having me here. I want to thank Mayor Butts, the city council, and of course, Councilwoman Falk for allowing me this opportunity to induce myself to you guys. I am currently the police lieutenant for URB. I am the watch commander for the evening shift, in which I work from 3:00 PM to 1:00 AM, Wednesday through Saturday. So I'm here to just give you guys a pretty much update of what's going on in District Four, and I want to say that I have some good news. Crime is down, and everything is looking well. Our call volume for District Four is not as high as it used to be. It is very, what I was like in the minimum. I am an Inglewood resident, not an Inglewood resident, but I grew up in Inglewood, but on North Side. So I've seen the transition of what Inglewood has been through over the years. I've been employed with the police department since 1994, so since I was age of 19, so I've been here for the last 31 years. And I'm proud to say, from all things I have seen within the city, it's all good news to me, okay? We have seen the trend of traffic. I've heard your complaints. One of my duties as a lieutenant, I'm also the traffic manager. So I'm in charge of our motor officers, our traffic cars, as well as our traffic enforcement detail and investigator. So some of the complaints I had looked over was the speeding, the complaints of people going up and down Crenshaw. Unfortunately, with the traffic construction that's going on right now, be patient with us, we still out there trying to enforce it, but it's kind of hard to just get through everything because there's so much road construction going on. So we are aware of that complaint, the complaint on 108th Street, as well as on Doty and Yukon as well. If you see something, if you would like some type of enforcement or complaint, we do have Traffic Action Patrol requests within the city's website. You just go on the police department website, and you click on the link, and you fill in information, and it goes directly to our traffic officers. Crime is down. We have on our retails, both sides on Century Village, I'm happy to say that the retail theft has went down to a very low minimum amount right now. Officers, they spend a lot of time just parked in front of Target or the Ross or Costco and those areas right there, just to make sure that when people come into our city, they'll see that the police is there, and they can shop freely and not have to worry about being a victim of a crime. We're also doing the shopping center down at Crenshaw and Imperial on both sides, and I'm gonna talk about the event that's going on at Crenshaw Imperial, which I'm happy to announce, we have another Starbucks. Can't get enough of those, I guess, right? And so there's a lot of stuff coming in the city like the mayor and one has spoke of about around SoFi Stadium. Like I said, we are doing our best to minimize the traffic with the lights, and I know it can be tough sometimes. It is, when you guys go through it, trust me, we go through it as well. So it's not like we have a free pass to where we just go through it smoothly. It impacts everyone, but we are doing our best to address all of those concerns. We have issues, I know people complaining about the homeless person sleeping at the library. We do have officers, what we call Inglewood Mental Illness Team, who has been sent out there to address it, try to help this person find a place to be housed. Just not only him, but all throughout District Four and throughout our city. If you guys see graffiti, like we have it on some abandoned buildings, please call it in. The more you guys call, the more we're able to assist and address the issues immediately. Me, as a lieutenant, I do not waste time on addressing issues. When I have someone come, something come up on my desk, assign it to an officer immediately. Within the police department, one of our structures for patrol division, we have four different shifts. We have a morning shift, in which those officers begin at 6:00 AM, and they work until 5:30 PM. And then we have a mid-morning shift that comes on from 10:00 AM to 9:30 PM. And then we have the afternoon watch that starts at 3:00 PM, and they're there until 2:30 PM. And also, we have a night watch shift that starts at 7:30 PM, and they're there until 7:00 AM. And within all those shifts, we have officers, what we call beat officers. And for District Four, we have what we call beat four officers. Their job duty is to address each and every concern that comes within their beat. And most officers remain in this beat for the duration of the shift. So anything that comes on, we, as watch commanders, we assign it to them so they can address those issues and stay on top of it until the issue has been resolved. So that's why I encourage you- So that's why I encourage you, if you have anything that's going on in your area, your streets, whatever, please call it in, okay? Our non-emergent number to our dispatch is 310-412-8771. That is our non-emergent phone number. If you have any concerns, graffiti, or parking, all this stuff, anything that you feel that need to be addressed, please do not hesitate to call that number in, okay? So as I was saying earlier, we do have some events coming up. May fourteenth, we have a Coffee with the Cop event, and that will be at the new Starbucks Center at Crenshaw and Imperial. The address is 2636, and the hours will be from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. Please come out. You have a chance to meet us, we have a chance to meet you, interact. A community affairs officer right there, Cindy Eller, she's the one spearhead this whole Coffee with the Cop thing. So hopefully she give us some free coffee and all the other good stuff, but not the, not the foo-foo stuff, but just the basic coffee. So if you have a good taste, bud, just have to come out your pocket for that, okay? And also, we have something that's starting up right now. We have, it's starting now, it said, "Does your business provide supportive services for the unhoused community?" Okay, so, the city of Inglewood and the police department are calling in all business that work to fill up homeless, food banks, mental health, and housing. If your business is part of this category, which I spoke of, please call this number, 310-412-5530. Okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you. I want to allow you an opportunity to ask some questions of Lieutenant Freeman right now. I have been meeting and talking to a lot of our residents, and I know that some of them have questions. So if you have any questions right now, anything that you want to ask Lieutenant Freeman, all you have to do is just stand up. We're going to hand you the microphone and allow you to go ahead and ask your question. We're gonna try and keep our remarks down for each one to like a minute per question or remark. So, at this time, I do wanna go ahead and see who has a question. If you could please go ahead and stand, and we will bring the microphone to you. Anything regarding speeding, or any criminal activity, or anything like that, we have our first question over here.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Councilwoman. A quick question, you mentioned that crime is down in the city of Inglewood. Just curious as to if there are any comparable statistics from last year versus this year? And the second part of my question is there, there has been an increase in car theft, meaning attempts to break in. My car was vandalized last month, in which I was left on bricks. So the tires and rims were stolen. And I've come to learn that there is a rash of car thief, I mean vandalism and theft going on with vehicles that's stemming from Hawthorne. I live off of Crenshaw and Imperial, so it's stemming from Hawthorne, bleeding over into our side of Inglewood. And I understand that there, and I'm asking if there is a collaboration with maybe Hawthorne Police Department, because I understand that there is a set of, a group of people that reside in the Westchester Park, I'm sorry, golf course, that is contributing to this theft. And just a recommendation, it may be a good idea to collaborate with Hawthorne Police Department to see if there's something we can do to deter this theft, because, you know, it's starting to be quite a bit to manage. My car was vandalized, and the night before, my neighbor across the street, her car was vandalized.
Okay, so, one of the things that, for stats purposes, there's a website that you guys have all access to this crime mapping. You can go on there, you can see the stats and compare it to now in the present. You say you live at Crenshaw and Imperial? What street do you actually own, husband? Okay, so, in the forest, working with other outside agencies, that's something that goes on with the Detective Bureau. Once we take a report, that's on the detectives. They have to look at the investigation to see what type of evidence was collected, whether it was fingerprints, DNA, and they look at the trends, see what, now there's a trend between Inglewood, Hawthorne, Sheriff's Department, LAPD, and so on. My question to you, did you make a report for your vehicle being vandalized?
I'm glad you brought that up. I did, and my neighbor did, and we heard nothing back from Inglewood Police Department. There was nothing but a card given, maybe a couple of photos, no fingerprints, nothing to that nature. So, we have yet to hear back from you all.
So I'm gonna give you a number to the Detective Bureau. I encourage you to call with the report number that you have and ask for burglary detective supervisor, and ask for a follow-up on that question. The number is 310-412-5240. And what I'm saying to her point, because we, me being the Watch Commander, my job is oversee the patrol functions for the police department. So if you guys have any issues for theft, burglaries, or so on, the number I gave you guys, the 412-8771, I encourage you to call it. At my end, I am able to deploy more officers to certain areas so we can do direct patrol and extra patrols, and I'm able to pull up the stats, to see, making sure our officers go there and they remain in the area, and they arrest anyone, I can see that from my end. Now, Lieutenant Meeks, when he was talking earlier, he's part of the Detective Bureau, so that's why I'm asking you to call him, and they can follow up, cuz we take the report, and they do all the other follow-ups.
Okay, Detective Smith, my question is, what are the necessary steps for me as the homeowner? I called twice. I am, I live on 107th Street between Prairie and Yukon. So between Doty and Yukon and 107th, any event that happened, the traffic is so bad around that concentration. What are the necessary steps that I need to do as a homeowner?
Okay, so, one of the things that you might wanna consider is attending the Parking Traffic Planning Commission meetings, which happens, which goes on every Tuesday. I don't know, was it Wednesday, I'm sorry. And I'll, have we started that back up again? So every fourth Wednesday of the month, I encourage everyone to attend it, that way we can address those issues. For each and every event that we have, whether it's at SoFi or Intuit, we do have officers assigned to traffic duties. So if you guys have any complaints, please call the number that I gave you guys. That's the only way that we can be aware of it, so we can dispatch these officers to those areas so they can investigate and see what's going on.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Olivia Flores. I live on 109 between Van Ness and Wilkie. We had a terrible incident that I wanna go in detail, but I'm very thankful that Mr. Malcolm was on top of it. I mean, I'm glad to put a face on the email. And Ms. Ellen, I was able to contact them, email person in, on the phone. But what can we do to protect ourselves? On my block, from Van Ness to Wilkie, we have been having incidents, we report them. What can we do? And thank you to everyone for taking care of us, cuz when we had the incident, the police, the detectives, the office, everybody was on top of it. What can we do to protect ourselves?
Okay, so, I don't know if you're aware, but we do have Neighborhood Watch. We do have community stuff that, we do have community sections strictly for the community. Ms. Eller right here, her job is community affairs. She working, and we all work together. That's why I say, if you guys have any issues of concerns or complaints, you can call her. I gave you a number, I'll give it to you again, it's 310-412-5530. She would take up the information, she would relay it to us. Now, my job as the, like I said, as the Watch Commander, is to brief this information to my sergeants, so they can debrief it to our officers. And that's why I explained to you guys earlier, we have four different shifts, and we have officers assigned strictly to the same area daily, so they can address all concerns that comes in from the residents of the city.
In order to form the club, what percentage of... What percentage of residents have to participate? Cuz I tried to do that, I went to talk to her, I talked to him, and only a small percentage was willing to participate. Actually, Ms. Falk, she contacted me over the phone regarding the meeting, but I didn't have a big percentage. What's the minimum percentage? Oh, wonderful. Okay, alright, great, thank you.
Thank you. And then I want everyone to know that I have been meeting with individual blocks. If you contact my office, if you're having an issue on your block, feel free to reach out to my office, speak with Malcolm, let him know you're having an issue. Either we will meet maybe over the phone, or virtually, or I will set up something, if there's a bigger issue with your blocks, to make sure that I hear the issues. And I will bring in our staff that can help get the issue resolved. I try my best to be hands-on, and I know that some of you I've been in contact with over the years. And so that is my goal, is to be hands-on and try and make sure that I am connecting with you. And if there is an issue, that I will get that issue resolved, and I'll bring in our lieutenant, or bring in our Public Works, or whoever it takes to get those issues resolved. So don't be afraid to reach out to my office. Before we leave today, make sure you have Malcolm's contact number at my office, and that you are able to, I would say lock it into your cell phone, so you have an easily accessible number for my office, and then you can call him whenever is needed, okay? We are gonna get moving on the next presentation. Can you guys please give it up for Officer Freeman? Thank him. And, and our Cindy Eller, who is our liaison, police liaison. Okay, and with that said, we're gonna move to our next presentation. It is our new Assistant City Manager, and it is Chris Jackson. And he is our business development right now, but he's been promoted, so we're transitioning him. So, please give it up. He is going to let you know what is happening in District Four. We have some exciting and interesting developments coming your way, so, here we go.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you to all of you for the love you guys have shown. It's been an extraordinary time, me here in the city of Inglewood, the longest place I've ever worked in my entire life. I ran a business for fifteen years, and I thought that would be it for me, but being here has been amazing, working with the mayor, the council, all the leadership team has been phenomenal. I have quite a few slides I need to get through, so I'm gonna try and move as quickly as possible, and quite frankly, I didn't bring up my printed-out version. So I'm gonna, every now and then, I'm gonna be scanning this way. First of all, let me start by talking about what's happening in our great city. We are now in the midst of our general plan. We have done our technical background reports. We've set certain levels of policy. You'll get an opportunity to be able to see some amazing presentations of where we are as a city. And that QR code, if you want to, you can take a picture of that, it'll take you to our website. You're able to kind of go into and add some information that's gonna help us make the best decisions for the city over the next twenty-five years. So it's a big deal. The mayor did an introductionary presentation yesterday at City Council, so if you wanna go back and take a look at that, at any of our social media channels, that would be fantastic. Alright, we got some development activity going on. Let's talk about housing, first of all. You guys know what that is? That's the Crosby and the Wesley. Those are those residential units that are in Hollywood Park. There are roughly three hundred of those units that are, have been built. If you have not had an opportunity, go down there and take a look at it, it's phenomenal. It really is. Some of the views from the balconies and the terraces, all of the amenities are in there. It really is an awesome place to live. It is not cheap, so I think you know that. We talked about that a few times. But there, they did learn from a lot of the participation that was going on. And as you can see, it's fully leased, fully rented. I understand there's maybe a few vacancies that are happening here and there, but it's been a phenomenal success. So I would suggest and encourage you to go down there and take a look at that. I think you get an opportunity, kind of what we're trying to do as we evolve in the city, and what type of amenities we're trying to provide to all of you. And if you have some friends over there, some really cool spots in there that you can hang out, have some good social opportunities. One of the other projects that we just talked about was the 3209 Imperial, one of the lots there, I think the last time I showed you guys, the before. This is the after, well, kinda you can see it up there. It's gonna be a twenty-unit development with affordable units in it. As you know, we've tried to source a lot of our affordability in all of our projects. It gives the developers an opportunity to be able to maximize some of their land use kind of opportunities, whether that's setbacks, or heights, or additional units to be able to really increase the opportunity on the land. And so we've made that a priority in the city. You've talked, and you've seen, and you've heard about Morningside. We have Dr. Morris here. One of the things that we are quickly working on is the first phase of that. This does not include any elimination of any buildings, but there is, as you know, Morningside has a huge campus. And so the Inglewood Unified School District, under the leadership of Dr. Morris, they're working to utilize that and capitalize on that. And the first phase of that is actually five hundred and seventy-one units, townhome-type units there. So it will literally transform this community. It's not all a one-hundred percent affordable project, which a lot of folks think, but there is a large affordability component in it for folks. But we're trying to cater ourselves to all of the type of residential types that are available to the city, and then also attract folks to come into our cities because of all of our economic opportunities with the venues. Let's talk a little bit about commercial activity. The corner, some of y'all know, on the corner of Imperial and Prairie, when you get off the freeway, there used to be this liquor store right at the corner. That liquor store is closed now, and I'm sure you're wondering, well, what is that gonna be? It's gonna be a McDonald's. So all you McDonald's fans, you know, I see a few of y'all, I've seen y'all in the McDonald's. So don't act like y'all, you guys don't go. But we're, what we did with this one's a little bit different. We did not allow, at the leadership of the council member, we worked really hard to get away, he should've saw. I would love to show you the first version of what they were trying to do, ask people to get out.
It was my cue.
It wasn't at all. So she would, she had a machete and a machine gun, and boy, they didn't know what hit them.
I know, right?
But what we ended up doing was creating a, an environment where it's gonna be really unique, a lot of landscaping, it's gonna look very different from any other McDonald's. It's McDonald's, don't get me wrong about that. But the amenities, the seating areas, we're gonna be staging it and using it, and there's gonna be a lot of filming that's gonna be going on here.
And really quickly, I just wanna point out, if you notice, this is a nice modern-looking McDonald's. We have, oh, thank you. This is a nice, modern-looking McDonald's. The vegetation is streaming up the sides of the walls, and a lot of vegetation in the front. And also, you'll notice that it's not the bright red and gold and all those colors. So we wanted to have McDonald's do a design that represents a nice rendition of, that fits the new city of Inglewood. And so, they worked with our team, they worked with me, and this is what we came up with. And I wanted them to do something that was really dynamite, but they were like, "Councilwoman, this is what we can do." But I thought that it was nice. So I hope that you like it, cuz we worked hard to at least bring you a nicer-looking version of McDonald's. So thank you.
Thank you. And I saw some questions, I'll be able to answer those when I finish up here. And there's some courtyard, it looks like it's a drive-through area, but if you notice, there's people inside of there. That's actually a little courtyard area, folks will be able to have outdoor meetings, talk, chat, meet each other. So it's gonna be quite unique. Alright, the existing extra storage space, which is adjacent to Intuit, is, as you saw before, is being rebranded. The goal is to tear it down, build an entire new storage facility there, which will be state-of-the-art. It will have a corporate office feel to it. So you saw, we've been very intentional about what the requirements are for storage. Now, as you know, with all of the growth that's happening, all the anticipated growth that's happening, storage is a premium now. Cuz as you go to smaller units, as you have less of those detached garages, you gotta put that stuff somewhere. And if you're anything like me, your garage does not have a car in it, it has stuff in it. I got a lot of stuff in my garage, right? Not the car. Not the car, right? So when you go to smaller, then you need areas to be able to put that stuff while you source through that stuff and kind of get it down to where it's manageable. So we've been working with the storage facilities to be able to do that. Again, councilmember, first thing she said was, "Uh-uh, no." And we said, "Now," I convinced her to sit down and talk with them. And one of the things also that we wanna do, and we've been intentional about, is partnering with these businesses so that they contribute back to the city. So we're looking at them coming in, they're sponsoring events, a lot of our corporate events that we're having that you see us talking about are coming from these big players. And believe it or not, one of the most profitable businesses in the country is storage facilities, believe it or not. They don't tend to go away. All right, let's talk about Hollywood Park. Hollywood Park is absolutely phenomenal. I travel all over the United States, and when I'm out talking about Inglewood, this is one of the first things that comes up, is Hollywood Park, SoFi Stadium, Intuit, the Intuit Dome area, what's happening in our retail. So I just wanted to give you a quick update. This is a visual, go back. This is a visual picture looking from the Sinopolis Edge, which is our theater, and then you look all the way across the campus. So you see, you see literally everything, including, I want you to pay attention, right in this corner here where that little sign is, I want you to remember that area, because it's important. That is adjacent, we're right on the edge of this, that's where we are right now, right? So there's a parking lot across the street if you were headed west, I want you to remember that, okay? So last time, we talked about all the retail opportunities that are coming, I'm gonna go down the list of some of the things that are happening here. We're gonna hopefully at some point get the Hollywood Park team to come up and kind of refresh everything, but I do want you to know, there's a lot of activity going on. We had a young lady and her team come in, talking about the farmer's market that goes on every, every week, I believe, every week now. So one of the things we heard a whole lot about back when we were doing the forum, when I first got here, was farmer's markets, farmer's market. Well, you have one now. Go to Hollywood Park, park your car for free, and go buy some organic food and vegetables. It's available to you, and we're gonna do a better job at publicizing that and making it available to you as well. So there were some incentives that the young lady and the leadership team dropped off yesterday, so we're excited about that. Go ahead, next. All right. In the middle of the campus, you see a big crane. Anybody seen a big crane out there? Like, what's that big crane? Well, that big crane is this. We're building our first major hotel. This is a 300-room hotel. Y'all may not like it, but I got relatives that come in from out of town and I don't like them to be in my house, so I wanna send them over here. Some of y'all know what I'm talking about, right? Here you go to, I'll pay for you to go to Cali, just go hang out there, right? I'll come pick you up, you stay, and then you go back to the hotel. Okay. So we're really excited about this, because this, I think, is the next game-changer here in the city. Because this is not just your regular hotel, this is what you see in exclusive communities. This is the type of hotel that will have international appeal to it. It's off of the lake, and if you've been to SoFi, you've seen the lake, it's off the lake, it's gonna be amazingly beautiful. It's tiered, you can see what it looks like behind me. It is phenomenal, the suites, I think it's 34 suites in, are gonna be amazing. So now all of a sudden, you don't have to be quite as far away from where everything is and you'll be able to go here. And this is actually a Marriott autographed brand, so it's... It's red. I think I need another battery. Who's on AV? There you go. All right. You're on AV too? She got you, she gotta pay you more money, man. There you go. Hey, get that man a raise. Okay. So, I think it's, you know, as you can see, it's amazing. You can go and look at Colly Hotel and you'll be able to see some of the amenities, some of the things. You come down to the fourth, come to City Hall, come to the fourth floor, you can actually see as well, is that good? All right. All right. You can also see some of the renderings of it and everything, but it is going to be, it's gonna be phenomenal. Next. All right, remember that, you pay attention to that corner, right across the street is, y'all remember Raising Canes was gonna build their facility on the corner of Prairie and Manchester? And then the ITC Project, which is Inglewood Transit Connector, came along, took that site. Well, they are rebranding themselves, they're gonna be right across the street from where we are right now. And what's amazing thing is that this is not a drive-thru, this is a walk-up facility. But it is gonna be something you take pictures in front of. It's gonna be one of those very iconic, it's probably one of the most type of iconic restaurants that you're gonna be able to see for the Raising Canes. But anybody heard, y'all know who Raising Canes is?
Yeah.
I had no idea. My son was at the University of Arizona, where he was going to school at the time, and he started talking about Canes, Canes, Canes. I thought he was talking about, you know, my good fraternity, my good brother over here who's a member of Cap Alpha Society, I thought he was talking about the Capicanes. But then he brought out chicken that was amazing and stuff, so you will be sending friends over to see. You'll get, you know, that activity all the way across. This is 105th and Prairie, another hotel that we're working on right now. One of the things that we're missing, okay, I'm getting feedback, I'm just making anything wrong. One of the things that we're, one of the things that we're missing in our city is really hotels, right? And what hotels mean, just to let you know, when we look at the Olympics and we look at FIFA World Cup and we look at Super Bowls and we look, one of the things that drives a lot of income to the city is what they call TOT. That's an occupancy tax that you get in hotels. That's big money for cities. Well, when you don't have hotels, you miss out on millions of dollars, right? Santa Monica, as you heard, who was gonna do volleyball, decided not to do volleyball because they knew everybody was gonna be at the hotels and it wouldn't cost them anything. And they still make 10, 12, 15, 20 million dollars because of the games. So these are the things that help things pencil out in the long run, and so these hotels are opportunities. Literally across the street from us, this is the Fairfield Hotel, which is also a Marriott brand, right across the street next to the parking garage, that's the Intuit East Parking Garage. This site that's under construction right now is that, this hotel. So that's what they're gonna, so next time you guys get over here, you'll see the outside skeleton of it, you'll see all the activities going on. And I think by the time we hit Super Bowl, it'll be built. And so we'll be having that for, obviously for our Super Bowl, I don't think we'll make All-Star Game, we're trying, but Super Bowl and certainly the Olympics. Another storage facility, what are you... This one's off 102nd though, it's not just on the street, so it's not anything you look directly at. So we weren't as dogmatic about how it looked because it's setback from the major arterial streets and stuff. But again, we're requiring them to have a corporate look, have an office look, there'll be additional glazing on it, it'll be well-lit, landscaping, all the good stuff that you come to expect in the city of Inglewood. All right, I'm gonna move through this quick. JD Sports, who's been to JD Sports? Anybody been to JD? Put your hand up, you've been to JD Sports. Shame on the rest of y'all. Leaving the city, buy your stuff at JD Sports. Go stay in the city. I know some of y'all are WSS people, that's cool. I'm not the, I'm the only one? I got kids, so WSS was my hangout, right? But JD Sports, go in there, check it out, it's in the Retail Plaza in Hollywood Park. You also get a chance to kind of get a feel for how Hollywood Park is morphing. There's a basketball court in there, there's a really cool area, a lot of artwork that you'll be able to look at. And really, it's a great, cool place to... Can you guys hear me? You're good? All right. Iconics, okay, who joined the gym? Uh-huh. Everybody else is like, you waiting until the end of the year to do it, right? Then you're gonna join the gym. Iconics, I heard over and over again, we got just regular fitness, well, we have Iconics now. And this is, go take a tour, it's free. Just walk in there, they'll show you around, there's a roof pool that they're finishing up, roof deck with the pool, it has all of the state-of-the-art equipment, it is amazing. It's definitely a five-star fitness facility, and for those, you workout buffs, you're gonna love it, so. Cosm, who's been to Cosm? Stand up if you've been to Cosm. Oh, okay, you can sit down. Now, councilwoman, we gotta do something about this. You guys, Cosm is amazing. You have, you have no idea, once you go to Cosm, it is an immersive experience like you've never seen before. Who's been to the Sphere in Vegas? Just a few. So you have an understanding, that's on steroids. This is really intimate. As a matter of fact, I was at my favorite cigar lounge, Drove Stogies, and at Drove's, I was talking to a gentleman, he was taking a picture while he was at Cosm, and they thought he was on the floor of the actual facility where basketball was being played. That's how amazing, it feels like you're there. I mean, really. I know I sound a little crazy, but when you go, you'll know what I'm talking about. So go ahead and source out, we need to do a tour, we need to make that available, so let's make that a priority. I was talking with a couple of the owners the other day. So let's try and get your district out there so they can experience it and have something open to the public that we can take advantage of. Y'all like free stuff, right? Anybody have a problem with free? Okay. All right, I just wanna make sure I'm in the right crap. Who's been to Sinopolis? Yay, put your hands up. Now, I know y'all talking about, well, I had to wait for my food and this happened and that happened. I heard a lot of those complaints, but then I said, "Well, what about the theater?" And they went, "Oh, theater's great." They're honing their skills, they're figuring some stuff out, we have robots running around and all that, AI going everywhere. I think they're settling in and learning who we are as a city, and as a result of that, they're able to kind of do their best. And so continue to support our city, right? I used to drive a whole lot of times to different other cities to go, I don't do that anymore, I stay local. Keep your dollars here, 'cause your dollars that transform your community. All right, so here's a quick lineup of what we have in the retail area. We have Sinopolis, we have Iconic, we have Cosm, we have JD Sports, we have Residency Art Gallery, which I need to show you guys, there's a really cool art gallery in there. You wanna really see some amazing art, it's right inside. We have Martine's, Coachina, and Cantina that's coming there as well, so they'll have another location. Who's been to their location on Venice? Pretty, pretty nice, right? Amazing. So you know this is gonna be just like that. So you'll have that same feel, amazing Mexican cuisine. And then you have the meeting spot there, location, which is the open food court area, right in front of, in front of Sinopolis. That is activated now, you could take your friends over there, really cool hangout. If you happen to like beverages, you could certainly do that. We have Phoenix Hair Salon, they're working on their, finishing up theirs, and that's LL Cool J's Salon. I mean, he's not the only one, y'all know. His name is on there, right? And then we have Google Code Next, which is a corner when you walk in, that they're finishing that up. We have Red Baked Coffee, which is coming on board, Sky's Gourmet Tacos, Love Field Kitchen, and there's a couple other surprises that hopefully, next time I'm here, I'll be able to tell you, and I think you're gonna be, I think you're gonna be happy about it. Think it'll be a place you come to. And I think, and I just wanted to show y'all this baby again. This thing is phenomenal. This is, this is worldwide, you guys. You're on the freeway and you look over there, and it's lit up, and it's vibrant, it's beautiful, it's your city. So I wanna give you all a hand for working with us, staying positive in terms of where you look, your outlook, and there's a lot more wonderful things that are coming to the city, and we're working through all the issues as we move along. So thank you, councilmember. I'm available for any questions.
All right, Chris, we're excited, right? Thank you. All right. Are we excited or what? Let's give it up for Chris Jackson, our new ACM. Questions for him? Yes, really quickly? Right here? Yes?
Are there gonna be any boutiques, women's shoe shops? I mean, you know, shoe stores over there? Give me something.
I was trying to stay clear of that 'cause I'm a white, but yeah.
I mean, we've been waiting, so you know, give us something.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that is really gonna catapult our retail area is really the hotel. The hotel is going to change everything, it's gonna speed things up in terms of what's happening in the retail area. So just be patient with us on that, but all of those type of branding opportunities are, we're taking advantage of.
Just that one quick question. Of all the unit that you had, it's only 3209 Imperial Highway, 20 units, they only have N affordable unit. So my question as our owner is how do you determine that of the 20 unit, 19 is always for profit and one affordable unit? How it's determined, number one. The second, how do you select who to have the affordable unit?
So it's two things that go on. One, it's formula-based. So what happens with that, and I think I see a couple of hands in there on the side, but it's formula, okay, it's formula-based in terms of how you come up with the number. Now, remember what you're doing with affordability is you're incentivizing it, right? And the way you're incentivized is typically you give additional units. So a site like that, under the normal scenario, would only have maybe 10, 12 units. So you're, you're really overcompensating for market rate to be able to support the affordable. Now, what happens with each one of those affordable units, and that's just, this is just one of our small projects, we have multiple projects across the city, I didn't talk about those because they weren't really in this district. But we do have many units across the landscape that have affordability. The way you deal with it, we have a housing, our housing department, Yakima Decatur, who was also promoted to Assistant City Manager, she oversees the housing department, our D and W. And so as a result of that, there is a selection process, there's a covenant that's maintained, 50-year covenants for those, those are not short-term things. And there's a list, there's a waiting list that's generated that we go from, and we source out and prioritize Inglewood residents first, yeah.
Thank you for that, and we have one quick question over here.
Oh, okay. I think these things are all great and nice and it's gonna bring a lot of young people out. I just, are you the person that I would talk to if I would, if I wanted to do like, I mean, bring up like us having better food, like grocery stores? Like Trader Joe's, Sprouts, and things like that? I'm not a McDonald's person.
You gonna tell them that one? So I'm gonna let her announce, you're gonna announce something to you.
Okay, 'cause I go and shop outside of the city because we don't have those stores. And so I just wanted to know if those things were coming to Inglewood.
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the councilmember, I'm gonna say something because many of you've seen me over the years and I talk about this. I go to this thing called ICSC, which is the International Conference of Shopping Center, every year practically, for the last 10 years. I talk about Inglewood, I talk about what the opportunities are, I talk about the fiscal analysis. Some of these particular providers just don't wanna come to our community, and I got tired of it. I got tired of begging and asking and pleading. So here's what I, here's what we, we turn the page by trying to do our farmer's market. We begin to talk to our existing grocers about having fresh produce and be able to source it ourselves. But one of them is on their way to the city, and the...
We're getting the sprouts, y'all! Sprouts is coming to Inglewood, and it is the old 99-cent location on Crenshaw, just north of, what is that, Manchester, okay? And so with that said too, I wanna make sure everybody understands, in addition to what our new CM said, that it seems like based on their requirements that it's really hard to get them to come to our community. And in addition to that, a lot of the stores that we have here have like a 100-year lease? 50-year lease? I mean, I don't know if you guys realize that, because when I became y'all councilmember, that was the first thing I tried to work on for y'all. You know, like, that was what I heard on the campaign trail, is that you guys want better grocery stores. So I... Because when I became y'all councilmember, that was the first thing I tried to work on for y'all. You know, like, that was what I heard on the campaign trail, is that you guys want better grocery stores. So I started talking to the shopping center owners and asking them, what can we do to bring in more quality grocery stores? And that's one of the answers that I got, in addition to what he said, is that a lot of these grocery stores are locked in for many, many years. That's part of their contract. So with that said, what we need to do is, when a lot becomes available, then we take advantage of it, like we did with getting Sprouts. So we're gonna take a couple more questions. We have some more presentations, and we're getting behind. Two more questions, and then we're gonna move on. Yes? Oh, three more questions, really quick, yes.
Oh, you hold it? Hi, thank you. I wanna say thank you for advocating for the affordable apartments. I wanna make sure that I'm understanding you correctly. When you said 50-year covenant, that just means that into the contracts, it's only gonna be affordable. It's gonna be written into the contract for 50 years for apartments to be made available affordable, correct?
Correct.
And then after that, the contract ends or renewal, or what it's, what are we looking in the long term?
It would end after 55 years. Unless they wanted to continue to renew it, it would be on the ownership team at that time. Yeah. I think it's 55 years, but.
And is that a clause that's being included in all our new developments of housing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if they're taking advantage of DC bonus, if they're taking advantage of some of our incentives, we have contractual agreement with them to ensure that they, and it funnels through our housing department. So it's not just left up to them. We, we manage it.
Okay, thanks.
We have two more questions, and then we're gonna move on.
Do you want them to stand up?
Yes.
If you could.
Okay, I don't need a mic, I got a big.
So it's being broadcast, it's being broadcast.
Teacher's voice, no. Question. Your morning side, the morning side property with the 571 townhomes, you said for rent. So is that money going to go to LAUSD, or where's the money going?
It's not going to LAUSD, it's going to Inglewood Unified School, just.
I mean, excuse me, Jesus mercy. I'm sorry, I forgot where I was.
Dr. Morris almost had a heart attack. I was gonna have to resuscitate him.
I'm sorry, it's going to Inglewood.
That's correct.
Inglewood Unified, right?
That's correct.
And so can you please tell me what the percentage of townhomes are gonna be rented out for low income?
I think the affordability is 20%. I think it's right at about 20%. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I think it's somewhere around 90 units, 80 units. I should've added that to the slide, but it's somewhere around in there.
We have our last question right here.
Mr. Jackson, I wanna say thank you for the amazing work that you're doing for the city of Inglewood. I just have one small gripe.
Yeah.
And I shared this with councilwoman. I'm on the south side of Inglewood, specifically Imperial and Crenshaw. Often in driving, it seems as though we're the stepchild of all of this wonderful development. There are tons of empty property available in that area. And I wanna get excited about Inglewood as well when I drive home.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yeah, and I wanna say, I wanna say that what you're saying, councilmember and I talk about this all the time, right? Typically with development, as you know, it's organic, it goes where it goes, right? But then it becomes targeted with a general plan. So why we're saying, we're sourcing out particular areas for land use to encourage it. So where it's not growing organically, we're gonna change zoning to allow for things to happen. But the council member is also doing a few, few major things, particularly with Crenshaw. They're gonna talk about Crenshaw. That's big, all those changes, because that was part of what, when the development community comes in, they look at those things on whether or not they're gonna source their opportunities there. So I'm anticipating along that corridor, you're gonna see a lot of changes in the.
Retail?
Yes. And renewal, which means a lot of those shops were small, intimate. We're trying to get people to buy larger lots and do bigger projects.
Alright. Let's give it up for Christopher Jackson, new ACM. And I am bringing up our, yes. Aw, thank you, thank you. I am bringing up now our Public Works Division. And while they're coming, I want to quickly allow Aubrey and her team to come up and share with you. You guys heard a lot about a farmer's market, didn't you? So this is the farmer's market team. Uh-oh, we losing, losing mic. I want her to just really quickly share with you all. Farmer's Market every week. So here we go, Aubrey. And tell them the big development, too.
Big development, oh. Thank you so much for, for letting me be here tonight. And I have to say, I was so excited to hear everybody clapping for the Sprouts. How many of you have been to the Inglewood Farmer's Market? Oh, a lot of you. Okay, I'm kind of gonna be preaching to the choir, but it wasn't everyone, so I'm gonna keep going. And also, I think you might, for those of you who've already been, you probably saw that it was called the Hollywood Park Farmer's Market. That was also on the flyers on the desk, if you grabbed those when you came in. But we have really big news. We're changing the name. A lot of our vendors were born and raised in Inglewood and live there still. All of our customers have a tremendous amount of pride in our city. And Hollywood Park graciously agreed. So we are now the Inglewood Farmer's Market at Hollywood Park. We're stoked. If you haven't been, the market accepts WIC, it accepts EBT. It has Market Match. That means if you use EBT benefits, you get fif, you get matched dollar for dollar, up to $15. That's just extra money for free for fruits and vegetables. We love that. If you've been, you know, it's a little bit of a small market. And this is a truth about farmer's markets. Farmers vendors talk to each other. Farmers work hard. They're not known for being rich. They have to come, they have to know they can sell their products when they come. But when customers come, every farmer wants to be there. We think this has the potential to be a huge market. We want it to be the best market in the LA area. It really does take you. So please help us grow it. Tell your friends, come every Saturday at Hollywood Park from 9 to 1. And also, I wanted to say, this is a place where we have, we think of farmer's markets as town halls. You know, Councilwoman Falk has had coffee with the councilwoman there. We would love to host the police, too, to have coffee with cops. We have master gardeners coming, we have the library coming. If you've got an event, we've got space and a growing audience. Think of us, reach out. We've got flyers on that front table. We would love to hear from you. And briefly, we also have, we're gonna ask you to volunteer. This is my colleague, Anmol.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anmol. Like Aubrey was mentioning, I'm a part of Good Habits, which is a sister nonprofit of our farmer's market. And we put on a lot of programs in and around the farmer's market. Specifically, we have cooking classes with children and their families at a transitional village here in Inglewood. And we also have a booth called Good Cook. So if you are a home cook, you're a good cook, you love to cook, any of that, we're looking for folks who are interested in volunteering at both of those opportunities. So if you're interested, feel free to come and find one of us, or go to our website, goodhabits.org. But we're super stoked to be here and be a part of the community, so thank you.
Thank you. Alright, let's give it up. Who's going to the farmer's market on Saturday? Can, can I get some people to raise their hand? Who's gonna go? Alright, we're gonna support it, right? Okay, great. Now, I am going to... We got some mic issues tonight, y'all. What's going on? What's going on? Okay, we're gonna try this one. Alright, so our Public Works Division. Tony Olmos is our new Public Works Director. He is amazing. I am calling him every week. And he is always so nice and kind and sweet, as I am telling him, I need this, that, and the other for District 4. And I, I really enjoy working with him. We actually stole him from Pasadena. So we, we got a good one, y'all, we got a good one. And so he's gonna now give you some great updates, including what's happening on Crenshaw, because I know a few of you guys are a little bit upset with me. But when you guys see how beautiful Crenshaw is going to be at the end of the year, you're gonna be like, okay, I, I see, councilwoman, I'm with you now, I see. It's, it's a little bit inconvenient, I know, but it's gonna be beautiful. So with that said, here is our Public Works Division that is going to talk to you about our updates. Thanks.
Thank you, councilwoman. Let's give her a hand again. She is amazing. Hello, District Number 4. How's everybody doing? So as the councilwoman said, you know, I'm still considered a new Public Works Director. I've been here nine months already. Time flies. So until the year's up, then I, then I can drop the new. And I can just be the, the guy in charge of Public Works. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna provide a few updates on some of the things that we do in Public Works. And then I'll turn over to the gentleman next to me, I'll introduce him. And he'll give, and he'll give the overview on what's happening with Crenshaw. So, so with that, just to update you on some things, and just for Public Works, for background, we're responsible for pretty much everything in the street, in the street area, from one side of the sidewalk, the street, to the other side of the street behind the sidewalk. We work really closely with our parks folks for all the trees, for all the tree issues, and for anything related to landscaping. But overall, anything in the street, Public Works. So we do all the different projects that you see out there, whether they're water mains, or whether we're repaving a street, or whether we're fixing a facility. You know, that's all within Public Works. So some of the things happening in District 4 right now, we have a sidewalk project. And the mayor talked about investing into our infrastructure. And I've been, I've been working, I've worked for some big cities and some smaller cities. And it's just amazing now, the amount of investment that's being made into the infrastructure, all, all because of the city council's vision, and them wanting to make this community, make the infrastructure better. That's music to my ears, because that's something that I like to do. Especially when there's resources and we're able to do that. Just to put in perspective, a lot of cities, even some of the larger cities, they might spend half a million dollars on sidewalk improvements. This year, we're spending more than $3 million on sidewalk improvements citywide. And a lot of those sidewalk improvements, let's, let's give them a hand. A lot of those improvements are happening in District 4, so we're really proud of that. So you'll see a construction crew, there's an active construction project going on right now. And they're making different sidewalk improvements. But just because they're not making a sidewalk improvement right next to your house, and you see one down the street, doesn't mean we're done. There's another project that we're working on, that we do every year. It's a streets and sidewalk project. So we're gonna continue assessing and identifying locations, and then we'll add it to the next one. So if you can't get on this one, we'll put it on the next one, or so forth. Because we have to assess the damage, too, because there's some sidewalks that are in really bad shape. Those are obviously on top of the priority list. And then we'll go from there. So be patient. If, if yours isn't as bad, we'll still get to it. It's gonna get on the list. The great part about it is that the city council is committed to investing, so we will make this, make the overall improvements. And on the street side, we're also investing more than $5 million a year on paving streets. So it's something that we're also catching at, that's another one. I saw some claps. It, it's really terrific to see that, because obviously, like the mayor said, you know, you know when you're coming to Inglewood, and the goal is to continue making more and more improvements, so that we're able to get us to the next level of, of quality. And then once you have the streets in really good shape, it's cheaper and easier to maintain, because then all you do is you put some slurry seals down, and then continue preserving them. In the beginning, it might cost more money to fix some of them, but eventually, we're gonna get, get caught up with that. Couple of the projects, we also have, we also have a water department or water division within Public Works. We take water from the ground, and we also import water, we mix it, and then that's what's delivered to you, to drink and use. And we're in the middle of constructing a new water well. It's out by Intuit on 102nd Street. So that one's under construction. That was $7 million to build, to drill a new well. And that one should be done by September, October of this year. So we're really excited about that. The more water we get out of the ground, and use it and mix it, the cheaper the water is that we have to provide to you. Because if we didn't have groundwater, and we have to import everything, it's a lot more expensive. So what we're trying to do is get more water out of the ground, so that we're able to provide the water at the least possible cost to the residents. And just the one for, for folks that live near, in the Renaissance, I know you've heard about the Darby Park cell tower, and trying to address some of the gap issues that you've had over there with some of the, with some of the service. So we're working really closely with Verizon right now. We're really close on. Yes, here she comes. Because it's, it's really exciting. So, so we are working with Verizon. We're getting ready to take a lease agreement to city council. And there is something that we have to do with the county. The county does require us to check with them, since now we're gonna be using part of this, part of the park land for a cell tower. We have to get their approval for being able to do that, since we get funding for parks and things like that. So once that's done, that'll go concurrently, and it goes to city council. Then construction will start shortly after that. And we're told by Verizon that by the end of the year, it should be up. Councilwoman, did you wanna add to that?
Yes. So I don't know, I didn't hear an applause. Are y'all happy about that? Because, okay, so let me tell you what's been happening over the last two years. We have had a lot of issues with cellphone connectivity in District 4 around the venues, the Self-Feast Stadium and Tua Dome. So I've been talking to a lot of our residents in District 4, and they've been saying, hey, councilwoman, you know, from time to time, I'm not getting a lot of good connectivity. So our team has been working with Verizon, some of the other vendors. And what we've done is, we have coordinated to get a cellphone tower right there at Darby Park. And it is literally centrally located, so that the housing in Renaissance, and in Briarwood, and Carlton Square, those are the ones that are most affected. And so that tower will allow for all of those residents to now get much better access and connectivity for their cell phones. So I, thank you, yes. And so it will not just be for Verizon. They were competing, y'all. So Verizon actually is the one that's constructing the tower, but there, it will be subscriptions that other cellphone vendors can use. So let's see, let's take a poll. Verizon users, raise your hand. Okay, got a lot of Verizon users. Let's see, we're gonna go with T-Mobile. T-Mobile, raise your hand. T-Mobile, okay, T-Mobile. Let's go with, what? TNT? AT&amp;T? Raise your hand, raise your hand. Okay, that, that's good, okay. Is there, what's the next one? Spectrum? We got a lot of Spectrum here? Spectrum? Nobody raise their hand? Oh, we got two people. Y'all might not get a subscription. Let's see, no, Sprint is now T-Mobile. Yeah. So anybody else? Did we miss anybody? Huh? Metro? Metro? Raise your hand, Metro? Okay. So we're gonna take that back, but thank you guys so much for that. We got help coming, y'all.
Thank you, councilwoman. So, so the last thing on the cell tower, it's gonna be with, it's gonna be basically, basically covered by a tree, a 60-foot tree, to make it so that, at least from far away, it'll say, it won't look just like an antenna. It'll be essentially screened out by a tree. The last thing I wanna update you on, before I introduce this gentleman next to me, is that there is gonna be an event on May 3rd. It's called Touch a Truck. This is the first annual event that's gonna happen here in the city. And typically what these events are, because I've been part of them in other cities, is that we showcase a lot of the equipment that's used by all these different departments, including police, we have fire, we have some of our refuse trucks there. We have some of our equipment, construction equipment. It's a really great family event, where you can bring, bring kids, and they like to take pictures on it. Even your, even yourselves, take pictures in there, in the trucks. And it's just a really, really great event. So more information will come on that, and I'm sure it'll be announced by the council members at the council meeting. So look forward to that. So without further ado, I wanna introduce our Associate Engineer in Public Works. His name is Kendrick Sanderlin. And he is gonna give you the update on Crenshaw. And he does have a few slides to share, so you can see some of the exciting things that are happening there. And Crenshaw, just, just to put in perspective, it's one of the largest projects we have going on right now. It's a $16 million project, really a renovation and an upgrade on Crenshaw, and more to come on that. So with that, Kendrick?
Thank you, Tony. Good afternoon, District 4. My name is Kendrick Sanderlin, as Tony said earlier. I am Associate Engineer with the City of Inglewood Public Works Department. I'm gonna talk about the Crenshaw Boulevard Improvement Project. The purpose of this project, just to quickly go over that, is to enhance the safety, The purpose of this project, just to quickly go over that, is to enhance the safety, provide smoother, quicker ride for, for our residents and people that travel through the city, and more importantly, or one of the more important things, continue to beautify the city of So a little bit of background on this project, it's a two-phase project, currently we are on Phase One. Phase One is between the 105 freeway and Century Boulevard. Phase Two is from Century Boulevard to 79th Street. We'll give you kind of a scope of, of work for this project, as you can see here. So the scope of work, sidewalk and, and concrete repair, we have ADA curb ramp upgrades, reconstruct, modify street medians, median landscape and tree improvements, up lights, as you see here in the illustration here. We have traffic signal improvements, ITS and CCTV installation. We have a street light conduit replacement, pavement rehabilitation, again, what you see here in the illustration, sign replacement, and striping with high-visibility paint. This project will roughly cost about $16 million. So I'm going to quickly cover what we've completed, what we're currently working on, and then what items are needed to complete this project. This project started August of 2024, and so far, completed to date, we have completed all street concrete work, which you see, excuse me, here in the, in the illustration here. All curbs and gutters, all sidewalk has been repaired, excluding the locations where the new traffic signal poles are going, most of those are in the ADA ramps. Excuse me. All conduits and irrigation for traffic signal lights. Currently under, under construction, I'm sure District Four, you've been through the city or been through Crenshaw, all the cones are, is more cones than, than, than most. We, we have removed all of the medians, so we're in the middle of removing all medians and then reconstructing the new medians with landscape, landscaping and cobblestone, which you also see here in the illustration. The cobblestone would be throughout the project, you'll, you'll see that in various locations. So, let's see, to complete the project, the future construction, to complete this project, we have, and to install traffic signal poles, grind and overlay the street with rubberized asphalt, and then finally, striping. This project is, is continued, or expected to be completed by January of 2026. And once again, as Mr. Tony said, we thank you for your continued patience. And then, last but not least, we have contact info. If you have any questions or concerns regarding this project, I encourage you all to, to contact Mr. Hunter Nguyen, he is the project manager for this project. His phone number and email address is there. Also included is the construction manager, the management team, which is Will Dan, their information's there. And last but not least, the contractor is All American Asphalt. So that's just to give you some, some context of who's doing the job, who's watching the job, and who's managing the job. And with that, next slide, thank you, and we are open to questions.
So in closing, I just want to thank Kendrick. This was his first presentation at a town hall, so didn't he do fantastic? So it's a, it's a, it's a pleasure to work here in the city, there's so many things going on, as I talked about before. And with that, I'll turn it over to councilwoman.
All right, let's give it up for them. All right, they work so hard for this city, I hope you appreciate it. We're going to take a few questions, and then we're going to keep rolling with our presentations. So, who's up first?
Really quick, you mentioned about the water. So, talk to me, because the water has been really funny tasting and funny smelling from my house. And so, I need, because when you boil it, it does white foam, I don't know what's going on. So, Golden State Water is my, my, you know, who we pay. So, what does this have to do with what you just mentioned, and what can we do about it? How can we get the water tested, because it's not right?
Let's see if we get the feedback. Yes, Golden, Golden Water does serve part of the city, and, and we do work really closely with Golden State Water. They are required, just like us, to take water testing on a regular basis, so the water is safe. Now, if there's anything with any kind of smell or whatever, you know, we'll take that report, and we'll talk to Golden State, and then they'll address the issue. So if you'd like, you can give your information to Malcolm, and then I can go ahead and follow up with Golden State Water. Okay. All right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for that.
My question is to piggyback kind of off of hers, I'm in Inglewood Knowles, so, since you mentioned about, there's a new water tower, and just what's, no, a new water tower that's being constructed, well. That the homes that are in Inglewood Knowles, Golden State has that block, or that, that district of homes. So, as it's kind of like considered LA is what I used to remember back in the day, is that the west side of Crenshaw basically was kind of like LA, but we're not DWP, but we're Golden State. We pay more than Inglewood residents, and we, and we are Inglewood residents, so why is there a discrepancy with our bills? And are we going to eventually be on that, I guess, transition to where we'll be getting our water from that well, or will it still be Golden State?
So, so the agreement with Golden State, I need to get familiar with it in terms of what the history is, I know it goes back decades, and you know, in terms of how that was set up. And that might have been for, it may have been set up that way for delivery of the water and the infrastructure that's needed to deliver the water there. So there, there may be a lot of that, but I can get that information and pass it on. As far as any changes, we still get the water from the same groundwater basin. So our well that's going to get water from the groundwater basin, the same basin that Golden State Water gets it from, and then they also mix the water, you know, to deliver to the residents. So it's still essentially the same water sources. Now, as far as servicing, I would have to see what the agreements say as, as to why it was set up that way, but there is a part of the city that is serviced by Golden State Water. My, from my experience, I believe it has to do with infrastructure and the way it was set up. But if you'd like, you, you can give your name to, your information to Malcolm, and then I can follow up. Thank you.
To piggyback off of her, that you're building, who will it be sourced out to? Is it for the stadiums or the residents?
No, so, all the water that we get out of the groundwater, we take it to our reservoir, and then we mix it there, and then that's distributed to city residents through the city's water pipelines. So it's not allocated to any specific area in the city, it goes to the central area where we distribute, and then it goes to all the residents in the whole city. So everybody uses that water, it's just mixed with the imported water.
I don't think that's right, because again, Inglewood Knowles, we pay more of our water than our, our residents that live over, a mile over, I don't have to worry about that, because Inglewood water is on one bill, which are, which are trash. Those who live in Inglewood Knowles, we get two bills, we get Inglewood for the trash, and we get a bill from Golden State, we get two bills, and that's like that. Oh, thank you so much for that. So what we're going to do is we're going to follow up with you, if you can, if you are one of the residents that received two bills, if you can leave your contact information with Malcolm. Well, I'm just saying, as far as, we're going to create a list, and we will follow up with you, okay? So, we'll definitely follow up with you. We're going to take one more question, and then we got to move on. Two more questions, and then we got to move on.
Just really quick, I know you guys mentioned, like, basically, the city is going to be like lit up, from what it looked like, like with the palm trees lit and all of that. Does that also include like the streetlights and stuff? Like, does that, does that have something to do with it? Because it's starting to look dark, you know? Like, really dark, like, hard to see.
So, so the Crenshaw project will do a, a number of things, it will increase, or excuse me, replace seven street, traffic intersection lights, as well as upgrade our lamps for the streetlights. So that's coming, and that will be on Phase One and Phase Two. So it's, it's, it's on its way, yes. It's a little dim, yes, yes.
Since you, on Crenshaw, they just remodeling everything. The most raggedest sign is at Van Ness and Imperial, all broken down, people coming into this city for all the sports, and nobody will fix that sign, and I have requested for a long time. It's right at the corner on Inglewood's side, and it's a sign saying, welcome to Inglewood.
Oh, we're fixing that sign. Come on, give me some credit, I'm fixing Crenshaw Boulevard. It takes time, we're going to fix it, don't worry about it, I got you. Yes, we're going to, no, no, don't worry about it, I got you, we're going to, we're going to rebuild District Four. One more question, and then we got to move on.
Yeah, good afternoon, my name is Guillermo Lopez, I'm a resident of Inglewood, and then I've been listening to all what you say, and then I, to me, I, I believe that you just focus on the, on the main avenues, but what about the streets that, where we really lives? You know, because I think I have like 26 years living, and, and I see the area is like nobody taking care in that section there, and that is the perimeter between Century, all the way up to Imperial, and then from Crenshaw to Prairie Avenue. So all that area is really bad comparing to around Inglewood. And then my concern is that we all pay the taxes the same, we all pay the same, so we got to focus in all the areas. So that's the only way I believe that we can call Inglewood, you know, equal, because we also would like to know, we also would like to know, you know, I hear, this is the second time I come in for the meeting, and then since then, I've been listening that you're talking about the projects that they have, the money they're going to generate and that, but we would like to know, how much money they generating for the city, and how much are you spending in what sector? In what areas? In what areas? We need to be informed about the millions and millions you're talking about, and then what they are being spending.
Yes, thank you for your, thank you for asking.
So, so I can provide a brief response. So, as I talked about with the investments coming in, we, we do have a way that we prioritize the different streets, and we have about 200 and some miles of streets in the entire city. So we can, we can't go out there and do all the streets at once, so there is a way to prioritize it, all the streets are rated by a certain rating scale, and we select streets based on that rating, and once, and with the investments that are coming, we're going to do as many of them as we can, but it is going, it does take years to start making our way everywhere, but when we put a contract out, we put it out citywide. So all the different districts are getting some improvements to their streets. So if you're, believe me, we know every street in the city, we know what the rating is, so we're aware of what needs to be done, and it's just a matter of getting around and being able to get to all the different streets in the city. So unfortunately, we can't do it right away, but it is something that we use a method
Just to finish with my question is, because, you know, sometimes they go and make some excavations on the streets, and then we put, when they cover everything back, they live worse than they used to be before. You know, you can ask anybody who lives around the area, or I invite you to drive around the perimeter that I mentioned.
Yes, so, so, so the one thing that, that we're doing, because when they do those kind of excavations, a lot of those are done by other contractors that are doing it with a permit, so I'm emphasizing with our inspectors to make sure that they're going to, that they're going to check with those contractors and make sure that they leave it at least very smooth, and until we can come back and improve the street, we just have to make sure that they do a really good patch job, when they patch up the street, after they do the work that they needed to do.
We're going to move on, because we have some more presentations. Sir, thank you so much for your question, I appreciate you, and I hope that all of you understand that I care a lot about District Four, so, and I try and make myself available, and if you ever have any issues or concerns, you can always reach out to my office, and we will get to a resolution with our City of Inglewood team. Can you please give it up for our Public Works Division? Thank you so much. We are going to move on, because we have several presentations, some of them are really exciting. Right now, I want to bring up our I-105 Express Lanes Project. Did anybody know that the fast track is coming to the 105 freeway? Did y'all know that? Y'all didn't know that? Nobody knew? Raise your hand if you knew. I got two people. Y'all didn't know. I'm going to bring up Ron Macias, LA Metro Manager, Community Relations, he's going to give you a brief update on what's happening on the 105 Express Lane, and he's going to share with you a little secret that made me feel better about this project. So, come on up, let's give it up.
Thank you, Ron Macias, I am representing Metro, Community Relations on the 105 Express Lanes Project. Thank you for having me here, just to discuss with you our project. Joining me are some colleagues, Philbert Wong, who's with Shared Mobility that oversees express lanes operations, and my colleague in Community Relations, Williams Lopez, is in the back. So, thank you for allowing us to speak with you all. This project is a major capital improvement infrastructure project for the area, major construction, major construction has began just recently. There are many benefits to this project, to non express lane users as well, and also the surrounding community as well. And the project is designed to improve travel times and enhance safety along the corridor, and also to reduce freeway overflow traffic onto the community. So I have a brief project update, a project overview for you, and to share with you a little information in terms of upcoming construction, and what to expect in the near future. Next slide. As part of a project overview, the 105 Express Lanes Project, through its construction, will build, expand, and convert the existing HOV lane on the freeway along the corridor into two express lanes throughout the corridor. Basically, the express lanes are being built from the 405 freeway all the way to the eastern, eastern terminus, at Suder Baker Road, roughly around the I-605 freeway. The project provides greater access, options and connections for all users of the corridor. Single occupancy vehicles will utilize the express lanes with a payment of a toll to, based on traffic demand. However, multiple passenger vehicles, vehicles with two or more passengers, will be able to use the express lanes toll-free, and the same goes for buses as well, transit buses as well.
Wait a minute, say that again, because I want to make sure, this is what made me feel better about the project.
Yes, the express lanes are available for everyone, but, in addition to single occupancy vehicles being charged a toll, but passengers with, with multiple passengers, or vehicles with multiple passengers, motorists with multiple passengers, two or more, will be able to use express lanes toll-free, as well as transit buses as well.
For free!
For free, toll-free. So this is our way of expanding the network of express lanes that are currently in operation. This project will directly connect with the express lanes that exist, that is existence on the 110 freeway nearby, and then we have the 110 freeway operating farther to the east. But the project is broken down into three construction phases, as you see on the map there. Segment one is under construction now, and that's where we're located. From Supovada to Central Avenue, we began construction, major construction recently, and we are anticipating being complete with construction in segment one in 2028. Segment two and three will be, undergo construction, those segments are further to the east, all the way to the remaining segments of the corridor, they'll begin construction in mid-2026 and end in 2029. This project entails no private residential acquisitions or impacts, all the construction is conducted within the Caltrans right away. All the construction is conducted within the Caltrans right of way. And this project is among the projects that were supported by the public during the Transportation Ballot Measure M, as the public voted to approve and support funding for such transportation infrastructure to improve mobility and enhance safety along the corridor. Next slide, please. So there are many benefits to the project, as I stated, even for non express lane users, also for the surrounding community as well. But the project primarily addresses the substandard travel operations that currently exist on the HOV lane. The average speeds during peak hour traffic are less than, operating less than standard. And so the project is intended, designed to raise those average speeds during travel peak hours to expected, intended, targeted levels. Also, the project is designed to improve overall freeway operations, trip reliability, improve travel times. Even motorists, again, in the, who are non express lane users or not in express lanes or in general purpose lanes, they are expected to achieve improved travel times as well in those general purpose lanes. In addition, the project is designed to enhance highway safety along the corridor. There are a number of highway features. The auxiliary lane is being added through sections where they do not exist and is to improve safe transition and lane merging onto the freeway. And with the addition of all of these improvements, these other safety features, traffic flow should, would improve as well. And this will result in, in a reduction in stop and go traffic conditions, reduction to rear end collisions and the traffic incidents that occur along the corridor. And also, as I said, the project will, is expected to reduce freeway overflow traffic onto the local communities as well as the local area should achieve benefits as far as traffic conditions in the local streets. Next slide, please. And here you see the final lane configuration. Once the improvements are in place, we will maintain the three general purpose lanes that currently exist. They will remain on the highway along the corridor with the addition of the two express lanes. And then you have the auxiliary lane to the far right to allow for safe merging and weaving. Next slide, please. And so in terms of actual construction, construction update, particularly with respect to construction in this area where we're located in the City of Inglewood, at this phase, and at this time, at this point in the project, the work crews are primarily working on the outer edges of the freeway, basically at the shoulder, right-hand side to perform new roadway pavement construction. This is happening all throughout the corridor or will be happening all throughout the corridor very soon. And this is to accommodate the new express lanes and the improvements provided by the project. So most of the work activities will be done on the outer edges of, of the corridor at this point in time, this phase of the project. So we will be in this phase roughly until the end of 2026. There you see an exhibit that shows work activities happening in this area and at certain locations along the alignment, there are sound walls there on the freeway. So at this location here in Inglewood near Yukon Avenue, from basically the end of the Crenshaw on-ramp all the way to the Dominguez Channel on the far right on the exhibit, we have to, we are removing that sound wall, which is being removed in order to support the new roadway pavement construction, again, to accommodate the improvements and the new express lanes. We will reconstruct that sound wall as part of the work activities. The sound wall is actually will, gonna be reconstructed with a taller height, roughly 10 feet higher, as we are going to remove this, remove the sound wall a little bit outward to accommodate the improvements for the project, as this is part of the overall work activities for the new, new express lanes. Most of the work activities will be done at not, during the daytime, rather, during the daytime hours, most of the work activities will be done. But occasionally, there will be some nighttime hours, probably later on during this phase of the work, because at certain times, crews may need to close freeway lanes and freeway lanes are typically closed at night during the late night hours. But the predominance of the work is done during the daytime hours and work activities in this area should extend up to the end of 2026. Work crews will access the work zone, the work area from the freeway side and they will be working behind KRL concrete barriers that you see along the freeway with separates the live traffic from the work zone. Next slide, please. And this is just a brief timeline of the work activities for this new pavement construction, sound wall reconstruction area. We, we are demolishing the wall now. It's just taking place at this moment. We're gonna proceed, we're moving some trees and vegetation to support the work area. We're gonna grade the area to prep the area for the new sound wall reconstruction. We will restore the landscape that we removed once the project is complete. But after the removal of the sound wall, again, we're gonna prep the area for the eventual reconstruction of the sound wall. We anticipate the sound wall to start reconstruction roughly around the late summer months or early fall. Once we have that sound wall constructed, we're gonna continue to proceed with some additional area grading, excavation, and to perform the final roadway pavement construction supporting the new express lanes and the improvements. And that should be completed by the end of '26 within this phase of the project. Next slide, please. And also, there are certain locations that have, where there are bridges or under crossings along the corridor. So in the same general locations that we were just looking at with respect to the sound walls, we have two bridges, Yukon Avenue and we have the Dominguez Channel. We will need to perform work at those bridge under crossing areas to perform new roadway pavement construction to support the improvements in the new express lanes. So work activities will be happening there very, very soon as well, in Yukon Avenue and the Dominguez Channel. We intend to start this work either late April, perhaps even early May now, as our latest update we're getting from the contractor. Total work, duration of the work activities with respect to these bridges will be seven months. And most of the work will be done during the daytime hours as well. And some of the work activities that this entails is drilled, installation of piles, barrier overhang demolition, false work, and then we will be adding deck installation to support the new roadway pavement construction. Again, mostly during the daytime hours, some occasional nighttime hours during the later phases of the project when there was, there's a need to safely perform the work with lane closures at night. Most work done behind the KRL concrete barriers separating live traffic from the work. Next slide, please. And that pretty much sums up the presentation. I just wanted to show our contact information. This is how you get in contact with the project, via phone, email, social media. We have a website. You can sign up to receive regular updates from our project regarding eBlasts, communications, whenever construction notices are being developed for new work activities, any new developments. We do house quarterly meetings on a regular basis as part of our ongoing outreach. So you'll get these notifications when we hold community meetings. And we'll have a presentation that goes a little bit more in depth. This is only a brief presentation for you all this evening, but our community meetings will last a lot longer. We go into the more details and the weeds of the work activities. So thank you. Thank you for having us here. We will be in communication regarding the project throughout construction. Thank you. And we do have a fact sheet. We've been passing this out and our contact information is there as well. All right. Thank you, council member. Thank you.
Well, I don't think that that was brief. I thought you did a great job. Don't, don't we, don't we think you did a great job? Thank you so much. And I, I, there was one more thing. I don't know if you mentioned it, about the landscaping. Did you mention that?
No, we restored, yes.
Yeah, you did talk about that a little bit? Okay.
Yeah, he touched on that, part of the brief presentation.
Okay, I might have missed that one, but I do, that was the other part of this project that I did enjoy. And that is that they will restore landscaping around the freeway. And as you know, we're having challenges because of the unhow. So there hopefully will be an opportunity to restore that landscaping and make that all nice and pretty again, right along the Inglewood corridor, right? You gonna do that for us?
Certainly, yeah.
Thank you. Let's give it up for him. Thank you. All right. Now, I am going to bring up really quickly, so we're getting a little bit behind. So what I want to do is bring up our Inglewood Unified School District team really quickly because I know that he has another meeting. And so Dr. Jim Morris is gonna bring brief updates regarding the Inglewood Unified School District. I want all of you guys to know the positive change that is happening at Inglewood Unified School District. So, Dr. Morris.
Thank you. And I, and I get to follow Chris Jackson, who was here earlier, so I have to be more energetic and enthusiastic. But I'm gonna start by giving you some awesome, good news. You know, I don't know how many of you know, well, I guess everybody here knows, if you're a renter in Inglewood, you pay higher rent because you pay money for school district bonds. If you're a homeowner, you pay on your tax bill for school bonds. Well, we had our last bond that the voters approved a few years back. And we had been working since January because we knew we had to sell this last tranche of bonds. Well, we were scheduled to go to the bond market to sell them last week. Now, I don't know how many of you were following the chaos that was going on in the stock market and the bond market last week. Four o'clock on Monday morning, I'm on the phone because the bond market's in New York, before the opening bell. Not going to market today, Monday. Tuesday. Now, we have a time limit. We gotta sell our bonds because we knew that this week, Lauer was going to the bond market with a billion dollar bond. Now, we only had $165 million. And next week, LAUSD is going to the bond market with about $800 million in bonds they're trying to sell. So I knew I had, this is my window to sell and we've been planning it since January. Monday's a no-go. Tuesday's a no-go. Wednesday, Thursday, aha, there's a freeze on the tariffs. Let's see what the bond market does. Well, I am proud to tell you, we put $165 million worth of bonds up for sale. And this is the good news. We had $2.2 billion in offers to buy those bonds. People are saying Inglewood Unified is a good investment. And the nice thing about that is because we had so many offers, we can then negotiate with the investors to bring down the interest that we pay on them that saves taxpayers money on their tax bill. So that's why, I just wanted to brag about that because it was just the one day last week, we had this window of opportunity and it was, just worked out really good for Inglewood. But I was really impressed that people said, "We want to invest." And the other thing I want to just share on that is, two times in the last year, we got our credit rating upgraded by the rating agencies. And I don't know if you know, but the better your credit rating, the lower interest you pay. Inglewood Unified had been in the B category for the last 12 years. We got upgraded twice in the last year and we're now in the A category, which is really good news. So, just wanted to share that with you. If you go really quick, I'm gonna just run through these really quickly. Just go right ahead, Malcolm. This is, you know, the district, as you know, has been in receivership for the last 13 years. This is kind of the district's report card. This is the roadmap out of receivership. Every year, in order to exit receivership, we have a group from the state called the Financial Crisis Assistance Management Team that comes and audits the school district. In the first 12 years of receivership, the district got one area, Community Relations and Governance, where they got passing scores and exited receivership. A lot of that work, Councilmember Falk was on the board and really took a lead in that area. One area in 12 years. This past, I've been here two years. In the past two years, we have two more areas exiting, and that is pupil achievement and personnel management. Those are the two areas that are gonna get out this year. That leaves two more areas, facilities and finance. And I came in and said, "I gotta make the tough decision. Folks are not happy with me about closing five schools, but we have to do a better job of making sure that children have adequate school facilities." And so those are the last two areas we have to do to exit receivership. And the report card for the school district, that report comes out in June and we're gonna have promising news. We're on the road out of receivership. You have to get passing scores and then hold them for a couple of years. So we're two or three years away, but we are definitely on the road. Go ahead, Malcolm. You can see over the last three years, we've gone from 36 standards where we were not making the grade, down to 28, down to 19. And this year, that number's gonna be less than 10. We're moving along. Next slide, Malcolm. I just want to tell you some of the things that are happening. Under construction right now, we have a lot of work at Morningside High School because, as you know, because we're doing reconstruction of Inglewood High School, we have to get Morningside ready because all of the students in Inglewood are gonna be attending Morningside Campus while Inglewood High School is essentially torn down and rebuilt. Next one. Under construction right now, we're doing reconstruction at the Daniel Freeman Warren Lane site that is going to be reopened in August. Lots of folks in that community are very, very happy. It is breathtaking. If you have a chance, you won't see it on the outside so much. This summer, we're coming in, tearing out the entire playground, putting in a beautiful new playground. And the interior of that school is pretty breathtaking, the improvements that have been made. Go ahead, Malcolm. Next one is Centinela. You know, Centinela is an older school. We had it repainted on the outside. We're doing major projects on the inside. New floors, new windows this year, interior paint, so it's gonna look tip-top. Next one, Malcolm. Oh, City Honors. This is actually very exciting. You know, this is the school. We're opening a new district academy at City Honors. And that is Jimmy Iovine and Dr. Dre are investing a lot of money. We're opening up a new academy that will only have ninth graders coming in this year, next year ninth and 10th, the following year ninth, 10th, 11th, and the following year ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. Incredible renovations that are going on at that campus that will house both City Honors and the Iovine &amp; Young Academy. Go ahead, Malcolm. And then our Child Development Center, you know, which is adjacent to Woodworth Monroe. I don't know if you've been to that Child Development Center, but we do an amazing job for two, three, and four-year-olds. But the facility's pretty shabby-looking. It is going to be raised and we're gonna build a brand-new Child Development Center up on the corner where the, the Woodworth School used to be. That's gonna be a brand-new, state-of-the-art Child Development Center. That construction is starting this summer. Go ahead, Malcolm. And then, oh, at Bennett Q, we're building a brand-new building. Bennett Q has their sixth, seventh, the seventh and eighth grade students in some portable classrooms. We're putting in a brand-new, beautiful building. We worked really hard with that community because that Bennett Q community, they are some smart folks and they wanted construction and a building that really complemented the structure of the current Bennett Q. So that's another big project. Go ahead, Malcolm. Next one, I'm gonna go through these really fast. Oak Street School, we have beautiful, we received state grant money to build an early education center there where we'll have specific classrooms just for preschool, transitional kindergarten, and kindergarten students. And that's gonna be another beautiful project. And next one, Malcolm, I'm gonna just go real fast. Okay, Inglewood High School. City of Inglewood, this is an amazing partnership because the City of Inglewood, as you know, is doing a, sometimes Mayor Butt says 30 million and sometimes he says 50 million, but a major renovation of the Inglewood Library. Well, we're doing reconstruction of Inglewood High School directly across the street. Now, you think about what makes sense here. Oh, guess what? I'm gonna save $20 million on my Inglewood High School project because guess why? We're gonna build a bridge across Manchester connecting Inglewood High School into the third floor of the library. third floor of the library. The city's doing a beautiful makerspace in some classrooms on that third floor of the library, and so our students will have access directly into the Inglewood Library. It's going to be amazing. This bridge over Manchester Boulevard, if you know any rich folks, it's going to cost about $10 million. Now, anybody here who wants to donate $10 million, we can put your name on the side of it, saying, "Building bridges for Inglewood youth," right? You know anybody, you just keep hitting them up. I'm hitting up anybody who'll listen to me, because that's my vision. And so, the next one, this is a really short video of what's going to happen. If you are having a really good day, and you want to be sad, go walk around Inglewood High School, because it is not deserving of the students of this community. It is in pretty sad shape. And so that's why, by July, I'm going to learn to drive a bulldozer when we start to do the demolition, and we are going to rebuild Inglewood High School. And we've worked really hard with the community to determine what it should look like. This video is about a two-minute video that takes you on kind of a fly-through of what the new school is going to look like. So that science building is up on the corner of Manchester, and now we're coming. This will be the front entrance to the school, which is directly across the street from the art park. And when you go into the school, there'll be a main office on the left, and this is kind of going into that interior courtyard with a student life building. And that obviously is the lunch shelter, the eating area for the students. I've seen this video so many times, and sometimes it makes me a little nauseous watching it. I don't know exactly what it is. This is, this is inside the classroom building, and one of the really interesting things is, you'll notice the classroom buildings, because of having to do noise abatement from the airport, where we might want to use a lot of outdoor space, there's really wide interior corridors with collaboration spaces inside the hallways, where students can work and have groups and small groups together. So that's it. I would be happy, Councilmember, to respond to any questions folks might have.
I just want to address, I live by Morningside only one and a half block, so my children are gone already, but graduated from Morningside. My question is, is there any transportation for all this construction in Morningside in order to go all the way to Inglewood High and the other one? So my question, how are you going to link these students to Inglewood High?
Beautiful question, and it was actually, right before spring break last Friday, we sent the transportation survey to all of the families. Because you're right, with some of the school closures, Kelso, for example, the Inglewood students for the next three years having to go over to Morningside, we have to offer transportation. So we have done a transportation survey to the families at Highland, who are going over to Centinela, to say, "How many of you need transportation? Sign up, and we will plan those transportation routes." And you're right, in three years, when we all go back to the new Inglewood High School, we will have to provide transportation from Morningside to that side of town. We're making arrangements now currently, for example, when everybody's over at Morningside, well, guess what? The football team still practices over at Coleman Stadium. So we're going to have to have a daily run for students, for example, on the football team, or the track team, or the baseball team, to be able to get back and forth.
So question, I'm hearing a lot of, like, construction by the Bank of America, construction by the 105, construction by the school. That's a lot of construction for the residents that live over there. So what are you guys going to do to make sure that, A, the streets are clean, and B, that the traffic is flowing through? Because people are speeding through the residential areas to get around the traffic.
Certainly, the impact from the school construction mostly will be confined to the school campuses. But you're right, there is going to be trucks and folks coming in and bringing concrete and those kinds of things. We have a really good construction management firm, and, for example, last week, we brought a new restrooms into Coleman Field. Well, we made sure we did that between 4:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. So as much as we can, we try to make sure those deliveries happen before peak hours, number one, because some of those trucks are huge, and some of the things that they bring in are pretty significant. And so we try our best to schedule those deliveries in time where it's not going to have as much of an impact on the community.
So, we're talking about school closures. So the school that's over there on 111th off of Yukon, Warington? Okay. So on Yukon and Imperial, you're talking about transportation. We need a crossing guard at that corner of Yukon and Imperial. It's, it's like a Speedway, there's an accident, there's the gentleman on 113th, his son was killed on that same corner. So if we could get somebody to work as a crossing guard over there on Yukon, it would be really good, because those parents, you know, they had a school that was right across the street from their home, okay? So they didn't have to cross the street. So that's my thing for the schools, can we get a crossing guard over there? Thank you.
I will make a comment about crossing guards and say, you're actually talking to the right folks, because it's actually the city that provides the crossing guard. So Councilmember Falk is pretty judicious about making sure she follows up, and so we'll work on that together.
My name is Leslie Smith. I live right off 104th and Dixon. And earlier, they did a presentation that they were going to be building townhouses right there at Morningside. So how is it that Morningside is going to house Inglewood students for three years, and they're going to start building townhouses? Is it after that project?
Well, thank you. Great, great question, and I'm glad to have an opportunity to clarify. So we have Woodworth-Monroe School, and then we have Morningside. And in between the two schools, there's a huge 20-acre swath of empty land. That's where the townhouses are going to go. So it won't have any impact on any of the Morningside buildings or the district's transportation department. It will just be on that strip of land in between. And somebody asked earlier, and I just want to be clear, so the school district, before my time, entered into a lease agreement with the developer who is building those townhomes. Currently, since that lease agreement was entered into, the district receives about $2 million a year in lease payments, and then, once the units are built, it will go up to about $4 million a year in lease payments. So it was a good deal for the school district. Councilmember Falk was on the board when that was approved. I just got to give her her credit, since she's here.
And I see the measure I, and I was on the school board when we got that passed. I feel so proud that I was productive and did something positive for the school district during my time on the board. We're going to take two more questions, we got to move on.
My name's Dwight Matthews. I missed something when I wanted to ask a question. Out of all the construction and everything, I didn't see nobody look like me, working nowhere. I didn't see, you know, job offerings. I didn't see none of that. There was supposed to be apprenticeships and all that. I didn't see nothing. Most of the construction, I see out-of-state contractors. I don't see nobody. Five or six years, or this job's for two years. I can do something. It's not being offered. This should change.
So, and I've talked to you about this, Mr. Matthews, you know that. I should have known you was going to raise your hand and ask that question, but, you know, we do, we try and make sure that we include local housing in our contracts. That's very important. We work with the unions. They're involved in our contracts, and we have a great relationship with them as well. And then we also work with our venues to have hiring events. So there has been, and I know that a lot of you have seen it, when we were building Intuadome, which was the most recent venue, there were a lot of hiring events that happened throughout the city. And you can see the advertisements, and they would recruit people to come out and participate in the hiring events. We did that for SoFi Stadium, we did it for Intuadome. So that's very important to the mayor and council members, especially for all of us, because we are a city of color, and so we want to make sure that we have opportunities for our residents that are also residents of color. So I know that I talked to you about that, and I know I'm not going to convince you, but that has always been our goal, and so we do try and put a priority on that. But I will continue to talk to you offline, and we have another, we have another big project that's going to be coming up. It is a transportation project, and I think you guys know it, it's the Inglewood Transit Connector. I don't know if it's still going to be called that, or if we're going to, you know, kind of transition into a different name, but there will be a lot more jobs that will be provided for that project as well. So just keep that in mind. I'm going to call you up when we do those hiring events and point that out to you. So, let's see, we got to keep going. Please, Dr. Morris, he was wonderful. Don't we, don't we see the progress with Inglewood Unified School District? It's really happening. I'm going to bring our parking and traffic officer up real quick, Bill Thompson. I want to see if anybody has any parking or traffic issues that's happening in your neighborhood. This is the time to get his number, let him know what's happening, so that you can connect with him and get that resolved. So just really quickly, this is Bill Thompson, and we're going to see if there's any issues or concerns. If you want to raise your hand. If not, then we can go on to our next presentation.
I have a super quick question. I'm curious about when we're going to start enforcing permit parking. I know there's signs everywhere. That's a great question. Can you repeat the question?
Hi, I'm Rachel Band. I'm just curious when we're going to start enforcing permit parking. There's been some letters sent out about when it was going to be enforced, but I haven't seen anything. No one ever has any permits, and we haven't received any permits.
Okay, yeah, I can answer that. So as the councilwoman said, I'm Bill Thompson. I'm the director of parking and traffic for the city. Usually, I'm the last guy that's invited to an evening event, the guy that writes tickets. But thank you for that, I'm a lonely guy. But anyway, the permit parking program was established back in 2019, and it was a citywide program. And the reason why the council members, you know, chose to do it that way is, they would go in phases in certain parts of the city. But if a part of the city wasn't included in the original ordinance, then they'd have to go back and meet again and create another ordinance. So some parts of the city do not have it. And by the way, I'll make it brief, but I'm going to be in the back of the room when the meeting's over, and I've got my card, my number, and I do like to follow up when residents have concerns, because I can usually get to the bottom of it. I work closely with code enforcement. We kind of work closely together, and I attend many of the councilwoman's community meetings, so I'll be in the back as well. But if a neighborhood decides that they want to go forward with, you know, putting the signs up, it's a simple process. It can be a matter of two weeks, and I can discuss that with you. There is an option in the ordinance, that if a particular block wants to opt out, they can do that, too. I will tell you that originally, when the permit program went into effect, probably three out of five calls from residents, they hated it. It's flipped over now, because now it's just not a matter of your venues, the stadium, the dome, the forum. But as you get south of Imperial, you've got travelers that will park their car in front of your house and call an Uber. Uber takes them to the airport, and guess what? You've got in front of your house for two or three days. So, yeah. And then there's the commercial trucks. I heard somebody from Hudson here. 119th and Limoli, that area there, there's a contractor down there. He's got six big rig trucks. He's finally moved them. He's rented a lot, Imperial near Hawthorne Boulevard, but that was, was a bit of a, bit of a challenge. She doesn't give up. And so between code enforcement and your councilwoman, and the nighttime calls I get, yeah, it's, we want to do that and make it, make it good for the neighborhood. The other thing I do is, I control the, traffic control for all the venues. So on a big, big night, we call it a trifecta, when the dome and SoFi and the forum run at the same time, you're talking 20,000 cars. I'll have about 125 traffic control officers out there. I work closely with Public Works. Between Public Works, their engineers, and boots on the ground, when we started doing this shortly after the Super Bowl, first one we had, it took about three hours to get these cars out of the city. We're down to under 90 minutes now, and that's because we got good teamwork, and we can probably improve that as well, too, and we do everything we can every day to try and make that happen. But again, I'll be in the back. I'll answer questions, I got my cards. I'd love to talk to residents, because a lot of times, a little problem can be just resolved in a flash, and I work with other departments within the city. Somebody else there?
What can we do about the traffic between 108 and 105 on the west side of Crenshaw?
I mean, you're building up everything, making it fast, and you've got that bottleneck, where everyone parks in front of those apartment, apartment buildings, and so you fly there, and it's no way, it's constant traffic in front of those buildings, and it just bounces up right at the 105.
You mean, the cars parking there, in other words, residents?
A parking space in the rear, it's just that they're comfortable with it, and no one wants to push the button to say, "No parking."
Well, a couple of things that I see frequently now, you do have apartment owners now that are telling their tenants, "Hey, you know that parking space you have? Well, I'm taking it back." And they're going into building ADUs right in the parking structures or the garages of these apartment complexes. You got that issue. And then you do have the issue where you've got residents that are multi-generation, you know, living in the same place, so they got more cars. I'll get the calls from folks that need additional permits, and it's a very easy process. We just need to get some information and find out what, what your problem is and why you need the extra space. And I think earlier, the speaker was talking about what's in our garages, and usually, it's never a car. So we can kind of help you out a little bit on that, too. But congestion is an issue, there's no doubt about that.
We're going to take one more question, and we have two very exciting, I want you guys to stick around, very exciting presentations, so please don't leave. Let's do one more question, and then let's get to the class.
I want to publicly compliment you and your team. I see the work that you all are doing. Your response time is very timely. So I definitely want to give you kudos to that.
Thank you, thank you. And I do want to thank city council for that, because last May, they increased the staffing. And I heard somebody mention some work, too, because I'm always hiring traffic control, all ages. I've got some senior folks out there that just love to come out on a Friday night and help out with something, some traffic around the forum, or, anyway, it's a great, it's a lot of fun, it's a great time, and we pay pretty good money.
A question. To my question, in traveling, the library on 111th and Crenshaw, I noticed that there's a few cars, homeless parking there. I'm not sure why the library is not proactive in engaging with your team to ensure that they're moving kind of along. We have a lot of children that are, you know, going in the library and, you know, walking through from school, so I think that's an area you may want to assess as well.
I certainly will. And when those kind of situations develop, that's immediately when I go to code enforcement. And when Cinder was here earlier, we have that mental health group from the county that helps her, and we kind of go step by step. But... that helps her, and we kinda go step by step, but certainly, we can, we can deal with those kinda problems.
All right, thank you. Bill Thompson, you guys definitely wanna get his number, 'cause you will need it from time to time, so, and if you don't, please contact my office, we will be glad to provide that number for you. So, two more presentations, really exciting. I'm sorry, we're a little bit over. I just wanted to make sure that you have all of the updates that's happening with District Four. As you can see, there's a lot of great information, right? So, now, we're gonna do LA 28. How many of y'all knew that the Olympics was coming to town? Did y'all know that? Okay. Did y'all know the Olympics were gonna be in Inglewood? How many people knew it was gonna be in Inglewood? Okay. How many people knew that there was going to be active, like, maybe an opening or closing ceremony in Inglewood? Did anybody know that? All right. So, I'm going to bring up a very nice gentleman, I just recently met him, and I said, "Oh my God, I gotta, you're gonna be my new best bud." He is Vic Knoll with LA 28, he's the Olympics Director, Venue City Relations. He is coordinating all of the different cities, but I already told him, I was like, "You're in the best city right here, so, you know, you gotta stay in touch with me, because Inglewood is where it's at." So, I want to bring him up. Come on up, Vic Knoll, LA 28, and he's going to talk to you a little bit about what to expect in, with the Olympics. Here you go. Great to see you.
Great seeing you.
Thank you so much for staying, I know I'm over.
No, not, not a problem, really a pleasure being here tonight. Thank you to Councilwoman Falk for having me here this evening, and thank you to all of you for sticking around and staying here late this evening. Again, my name is Vic Knoll, I'm the Director of Venue Cities Relations for LA 28, the Olympic and Paralympic Games, here to provide you a brief verbal update on the Games. Councilwoman Falk already asked me to keep it short, below five minutes, which completely works for me. And earlier in my career, one of my colleagues drummed the three Bs into public speaking into me, which was, "Be bold, be brief, and be gone." So, that is my goal here tonight. I've been at LA 28 for three years, and I've been working with the city of Inglewood that entire time, with Mayor Butts, the city councilmembers, and the city team. So, we're really excited about LA 28, and the third time LA will be hosting an Olympic Games. The second time was in 1984, those iconic games, what we really consider to be the gold standard in Olympic Games. My wife was a kid in 84, and she remembers going, having the very good fortune of going to gymnastics with her father at Pauley Pavilion, a memory that resonates for her to this day. The first time, does anybody know the first time LA hosted, what year LA hosted the Games? Anybody, can you raise your hand and give me a year?
84.
84 was the second time.
36.
Nah. Who said 32?
She said 32.
32 was the first year LA hosted the Games, and so, these pins are collectible. If you've been to a Games before, people all over the world trade them, so they're just starting to come out, so save that, and somebody is gonna, gonna wanna trade you for it one day, so. But in 2028, this'll actually be the first Summer Games the United States has hosted since 1996 at the Olympic Games in Atlanta. In 2028, we're really excited, because it's actually the first time LA will be hosting the Paralympic Games, so a really amazing way to highlight our disabled community. If you haven't seen the Paralympic Games, I hope some of you watched it, the Paris Games last summer, Team USA Men's Basketball won the gold. It was some of the most inspiring, amazing athletes that you'll ever see in your life. So, really encourage you to not watch just the Olympic Games, but to watch the Paralympic Games too. As I mentioned, LA 28 is thrilled to be here in Inglewood, and Inglewood being a venue city for the Games. In terms of official venue cities, Inglewood joins Long Beach, Carson, and Pasadena in this region, and you may have heard just yesterday, we announced a bunch of venue assignments as well across the Southern California region. We're gonna be in San Gabriel Valley, we're gonna be in the Valley of LA, we're gonna be up in the Rose Bowl again, and down in Long Beach in Orange County, so it's gonna be really great. But here in Inglewood, in 1984, the Forum hosted basketball, and we're gonna be back here in 2028, right down the street here, at the Intuit Dome for basketball as well. So, I think it's really gonna be an amazing event. You know, Intuit Dome is, if you haven't been there yet, I encourage you to go, it is the most beautiful, world-class basketball arena in the entire world. It is top-notch, and we're gonna be there for Olympic basketball in 2028. The other sporting event that's gonna be here in Inglewood is swimming, and of all places, at SoFi Stadium. So, I know you're all wondering, like, there's not a pool at SoFi, right? But we're actually gonna build a temporary pool and, on the field at SoFi. And so, it's going to be an amazing event, it's gonna allow these Games to present the largest space for a swimming event, I think, in Games history, so really excited about that. A little bit about the Games by the numbers, 'cause it's big. 15 million spectators descending upon Los Angeles, 5 billion viewers from around the world, 36 Olympic sports, 23 Paralympic sports, over 15,000 athletes. For us, the numbers are so staggering, the way we try to put it in context for people, is that it's, for us, the equivalent of putting on seven Super Bowls per day over the course of the 16 days of the Olympic Games, taking a two-week break, and then putting on about two Super Bowls per day over the course of the 12 days of the Paralympic Games. Inglewood, as we all know, has hosted a Super Bowl and is gonna host another Super Bowl before then. So, you know, this city is really well-prepared for that, and we're incredibly excited about I know you're all worried about transportation. I will say this about transportation, you may have heard that this is actually a transit-first Games. So, what that means is that people aren't going to be able to just drive down and park at SoFi the way they do for a Rams or Chargers game, or for, you know, Taylor Swift, right? It's going to be, we're really gonna be encouraging people to take public transit, and if they don't do that, they're going to be directed to park-and-ride locations across the region, and they'll take a bus in zero or near-zero GHG emitting bus. So, it's really gonna reduce the impact, not just on the environment, but the impact on the local community in terms of the amount of traffic coming into town, so. More on that later. Just this last Saturday, as the councilwoman mentioned, LA 28 had the great pleasure of participating at the Inglewood STEM Fest in partnership with the Science of Sport and the City of Inglewood. It was our third year in a row that we participated, and it's, it's a really amazing event. Was there anybody that attended that event? Okay, it was, I know the councilwoman's kids did, but it's really, it's really an amazing event, and something that we were really proud of. We had a small team there volunteering and distributing Nike-branded swag bags, athletic bags, Nike water bottles, water pumps, and the kids got to have their choice of a Nike ball, whether it was basketball, or soccer ball, or volleyball, and we were really excited about that. We had about 500 local kids lined up, excited, and for us, it's a prime example of our commitment to address barriers to sport and allow new sport exposure. For me, it's really one of my favorite kinda things that we do on a personal level, because it allows us to inspire the next generation of athletes and leaders, and that's really what these Games are all about, is inspiring kids. For me, I remember, you know, being the slowest, arguably, most definitely, the slowest member of my school's track team, but that didn't mean that every time I crossed that finish line, I didn't raise my arms above my head, imagining that I was winning a gold medal at the Olympics. And I, you know, I hope that that's the case for every kid, and that's really the power of sport. So, lastly, if you're interested in learning more about the Games, I think our website is up there. We've got a lot of information about, about jobs, volunteer opportunities, and more. This evening, we're not gonna be taking Q and A, but I'll be coming back, and as we continue our planning, we'll be coming back and doing more town halls and really engaging with the community. But I wanna close by thanking the councilwoman again, Mayor Butts, and the city team, our partners with Inglewood Police Department, et cetera. But last, and certainly not least, I wanna thank all of you, because LA 28 recognizes that it's the community and you all that are welcoming us here, and we hope that you're excited, as excited as we are, to welcome the world to Inglewood. Thank you.
All right, can we please give it up for Vic Knoll? So, as you can imagine, you will be receiving lots of updates on LA 28, 'cause it's going down right here in our neighborhood, right? So, gotta keep you guys up to date on everything happening with LA 28. So, we have one last presentation, and it's a good one. So, I'm going to bring up our team, Robin Horwitz, and the Events, Ellie Horwitz, Marketing and Public Relations Team, and they are with Big Three, Community Engagement, and they're going to talk about a very, well, LA 28 is pretty exciting, right? But, you know, but they have a great event, and that one will be happening this year. So, are we ready? Y'all ready? Are we awake? Okay, all right, here we go. Come on, Robin, come on, hi.
Yes, yes, thank you so much for staying, I appreciate you. Hi, thank you so much.
Hi, and thank you for having us here tonight. So, we are super excited, and let me just see, we are here to announce a new basketball team that's coming to LA, and let me tell you a little bit about it. So, can we get the next slide? Okay. So, January 11th, 2017, I think you all recognize this individual, producer, actor, and music legend Ice Cube announced the launch of Big Three, a new three-on-three basketball, a basketball league focused on playing half-court. And this league has the most incredible basketball players, all coming from the NBA. So, very excited that we are part of this, and Los Angeles is getting their very own three-on-three basketball league known as the Los Angeles Riot.
Okay, so, who is on our team? So, the LA Riot is coached by Swaggy P., Nick Young, NBA veteran and certified LA icon. Then, we have Jordan Crawford, who is a scoring machine and was actually 2023's Big Three scoring leader. And then, we have Dwight Howard, NBA champion, Hall of Famer, and dominant big man. And then, Elijah Stewart, who is LA-bred sharpshooter, bringing local pride. He holds the records for the most three points at USC. Can we get? Yeah. And then, we know Intuit Dome has been showed a few times tonight, but we want you to mark your calendars, because August 9th, at Intuit Dome, LA Riot has their first home game.
So, one of the things I just also wanted to mention, we just obviously heard about the LA Olympics, three-on-three basketball is now actually in the Olympics, so super exciting that we've just launched, or are launching the league, and then we're actually gonna have three-on-three in the Olympics. So, we are planning our first community event for the launch of the team. We're still figuring out the date, but it's gonna be at Crenshaw Imperial Plaza, and we're gonna have our team out there, and hopefully, Ice Cube will be able to attend as well. And it's just gonna be a really fun, family-friendly event, lots of vendors, lots of fun. I don't know if you've heard about the Hoop Bus, but they will be there too, and we'll have some fun basketball being played. So, to stay abreast, and look out for information on our event.
So, to stay up to date on all of our community events and everything we have going on, you can scan this QR code, and it should open to the LA Riot's Instagram page.
And then, we should have a video that we hope will play. Is it able to play? Yeah. Can we hear it? Is it sound? Well, if you go to, and we can pull it up again, the QR code, you can actually go to our Instagram, and you can see the video on the Instagram. But super excited, and, you know, we look forward to inviting all of you and come and watch the team playing at Intuit Dome. See you there. Bye.
Thank you so much, thank you. All right, thank you for sticking around, I appreciate it. So, we, I don't know if you caught it, Ice Cube's connected to this team, and we have a, a event that will be happening at Crenshaw Imperial Shopping Center, and that will hopefully be happening, is it, in the very, very near future? So, please, check my social media, you'll get those updates. And then, August 9th is when the big game is happening at Intuit Dome. So, thank you all so much for sticking around. I hope you guys don't hate me, but I had lots of great information that I wanted to share with you, and I got through it, and so, now, you're more knowledgeable than anybody else in the city of Inglewood. You can go and call your friends tomorrow and say, "Guess what? I know." Okay? So, make sure you stay connected with me, get on my social media, and we will have all these updates available, so, and then, if you have any issues, please contact my office, go through Malcolm, we are here for you. I appreciate you, thank you for staying till the end, yay! Have a great night, drive safe.